All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for September 9, 2021 to order. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
All right, very... Yeah. Mr. Rutledge, can you hear us?
I can hear you quite well. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. So just for clarification, we have Mr. Rutledge joining by Zoom call. So we have, actually, we have five on the dais and one on Zoom. And we'll see if Mr. Roth joins us here shortly. All right. Ms. Leidar, are there any changes to today's agenda?
Good morning. Yes. Item number four, Plan Amendment 2104-Ordinance 2129 Transportation Element Text Amendment and Map Series Update, Public Comment. And item number five, LDCT 2101, Ordinance 2119, County Initiated Land Development Code Text Amendment Impact Fizz, and as Exhibit B has been revised to include a minor revision to the proposed text amendment language found in the Land Development Code, Section 1106.2.2.3, Page 5 of 7. And these changes are included in the update memo.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Schenck, anything from the county attorney's office?
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And this is an opportunity to speak on something that is not on today's agenda. If you have an item that is on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity, when that item is specifically heard, to also make a comment. So again, is there anybody who wishes to speak on items that are not on today's agenda? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing and go to the first item, item number one. That is a presentation upon request, I believe. Correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And I know we've heard this before. So what I'm gonna do is just go ahead and open this up for public comment, see if there's any interest in having a discussion related to this matter. I don't have any speaker cards for it, so I don't know that there's anybody in the audience specific for this topic, but we'll go ahead and open it up. So I'd like to, I'm sorry, we need to read it into the record.
Yes.
Trying to get ahead of myself.
PA 2102, Ordinance 2126, County Initiated Comprehensive Text Amendment Pearl of Flood Ad Compliance Legislative. Ms. Nicole Knapp is the case manager, and this be continued to no date set and to be re-advertized.
Okay. So again, it's to be continued, but still, there's opportunities for any discussion related to this matter. So what I would like to do is open it up to public comment. So item number one, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on item number one? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're gonna close that item or that application. It's again gonna be continued. So with that, Chair will consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that be continued to, no date set, and to be re-advertized.
Very good. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Delez line second. Any discussion? All right, very good. I'll call the matter of the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. Those opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Thank you. All right, the next item is item number two. Ms. Leidar, can you please read item number two, Manatee Ventures Rezone into the record?
Yes. Item number two, C2104, Manatee Ventures Rezone, Manatee Ventures INC., owner, PLN 2103-0110, quasi-judicial, and is a rezone for more or less 22.3 acres generally located on the northwest corner of the intersection of 24th Avenue East and Mendoza Road, Palmetto, Manatee County, from A1 Agriculture Suburban to the RSF2 Residential Single Family to Dually Units for Acres, Sonning District. And the agent is Mr. Smich.
Very good. For the commissioners, have there been any ex parte communications regarding this application?
No, sir.
No.
No, sir.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Where's Mr. Schmidt? Okay. Yeah. So the, generally speaking, if you intend to speak on any application that is quasi-judicial, you need to be sworn. We do have a couple items that are legislative, but it might be the best thing if you have any intent to speak today to be sworn in. So if you would, please rise to be sworn in. If you don't do it now, if we're hearing a quasi-judicial, you'll have to do it before you can speak, so.
Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and factual representations you are about to present to the Planning Commission would be truthful and accurate?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, would you like to introduce your application?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commissioners, good morning, everybody. For the record, my name is Bob Schmidt with Land Planning Associates. I'm a certified planner, and I have been sworn. I'll be very brief. This is a small rezone. I think, Rosina, in your introduction, you said it was 22.33. It's 2.33. It's much smaller than that. The location, these are just the staff report maps. The location of this rezone is at the northwest corner of 37th Street East or Mendoza Road and 24th Avenue East. This is part of a large tract of land that was purchased by my client, Mr. Steve Reinhardt, who I thought was gonna be here, but I don't see him here this morning. And he intends to split this property either by certified lot split or a minor subdivision into up to four lots. That's really the explanation. It's a rezone from A1 to RSF2, and it's just a straight rezone. I don't have a plan associated with the application. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have to.
Very good. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Is the next thing we'll have is staff presentation, and then we'll open it up to citizen comment. So who do we have?
Mr. Chair, this item is presentation upon request.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that part of the agenda. So let's, with that in mind, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. I have one speaker card, and then I'll open it up to the, to anybody else who wishes to speak. I think the name is Mr. Stephen Sharp. If you would, sir, please come forward, state your name, and that you have been sworn.
Yeah, my name is Stephen Joseph Sharp, and I have been sworn to be accurate and honest. So I've contacted eight of our neighbors right there within, you know, a stone's throw or within a couple hundred feet of this property. And we've all, a lot of us have lived there for a number of years. I've lived there since 1993. And my neighbor's lived there since his dad bought, built the house in 1954, and he's lived there since 1973 full-time. And my other neighbor, Mr. Barr, he's lived there since 1977. And Don Balsam and Kevin Willis has lived there. He was born there in 1971. And him and his mom live right next door to each other. And Ryan Johns just bought the five acres across the street from this property, and I talked to him this morning. And also, I talked to CJ Keane a couple times, and he happens to be neutral. Out of eight of us, he was neutral. Seven of us are opposed. And the reason we're opposed is, A is when they bought that tract of land, it was zone A1. It was one house per one acre, which every home on our initial street right there is the same exact way. And that area, if you're probably not familiar with it, but water flows down the ditch of 24th Avenue, flowing from north to south. And it swings around that corner right there and heads towards my home. And on the next property over, I've got five acres. And some people have five acres, some people have one acre, some people have two and a half acres there. And there's a church across the street from our homes that's on nine acres. And this Dr. De Sue, I didn't get a chance to talk to him this morning, but I will. But anyways, at this point, 88% of us are opposed. And the reasons why is, just like I stated, we've all got a, we're all used to living there, and we're all, you know, have, you know, lived there a long time. And there's a reason why we've lived there, because we all have our property and we have our privacy. And the subdivisions about a mile east of our home have been numerous here in the last three years. And they throw a ton of traffic down our road, and it's all 60 and 70 mile an hour traffic. And it's awful. I mean, you don't wanna be out there and check your mail. Let's put it that way. You gotta time that right. So it's no, it's no picnic on itself. And we realize that progress happens, but in our little neck of the woods, you know, we just don't want it to happen. I mean, that property right there was 200 acres, and it sat as a pasture since I've been there. And probably its whole career's been a pasture since Mr. Grimes bought it. And back when...
Please wrap up your comments, please.
Okay. And so, but anyways, a bigger issue, one of the biggest issues is the water coming down 24th Avenue, swinging around there. It backs, we have more than three inches of rain. It backs up into my property and CJ's, and my neighbor CJ has gotten into his building. And we are, the county hasn't dealt with that issue since I've been there.
Right.
And probably many years before that. But so, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And just general guidance, each speaker will have three minutes, unless they actually have documentation that they're speaking for a group. If you could, please focus on items of evidence, things that are specific, the things that feel are critical in the decision-making process, things that can be addressed specifically during this process. So very good. So that was the only speaker card I have, but we're gonna open it up for public comment for anybody who, anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this application. So you have to come forward. So, yes. If you would, come forward, state your name, and that you have been sworn. No, at the dais, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Good, better. I'm short. Good morning. My name is Jordan Fitzgerald, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
I am also a neighbor on 24th Avenue East. And my husband, Thomas, and I also oppose the changing of the rezoning for very similar reasons. We live there because it is an agricultural area, and we fear that if the area is rezoned, it will lead to more rezoning in the area, which will take away the ability to own farm animals. And we have a small homestead. So that is our main concern. And also, traffic on that area. It does get a little dangerous. And we have a dog that keeps escaping. So we are very concerned about how fast the traffic is going in that area. That's about it. I didn't wanna take too much of your time, but thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So again, is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing process, or portion of the hearing. And Mr. Schmidt, could you please come forward? I have a couple questions for you. This, this is a little bit unusual. The zoning doesn't split the property. So once the process is done, it's gonna be a single parcel of land still, correct?
Upon the rezoning, yes.
Yes.
We would have to file an application to split the property and... Drainage would have to do their review. Traffic certainly would. We did do a traffic impact statement for this rezone application, and four houses don't generate enough traffic to merit any improvements. But we still have a process to go through. And not knowing that anybody was gonna be here, I'll be happy to relay, get their contact information, relay their, their contact information to Mr. Reinhardt, and he can reach out to them if that's the, I think that they would probably appreciate that. And we'll try to communicate.
Very good. And I've never encountered this. I don't know that I've ever had to ask this question. Do four lots warrant a stormwater management system?
You, certainly within concurrency, it's part of the review. I don't know if it's, if it is large enough to merit its own stormwater pond. But if, we'll obviously be working with drainage matter, or drainage staff as we go through the process.
Right. And I think if you could, it would be wise to meet with the neighbors, because I think there are some misconceptions related to the zoning of this property, how it affects other properties. What is the future land use in this area?
It's RES3.
RES3.
Yeah. And knowing this was on presentations upon request, I did have more of a presentation, if you'd like. But it is RES3. We're asking for RSF2, which is well within that future landage designation. It's in the urban service area, and it's certainly in an area that the neighbors are correct. I mean, it's a lot of, a lot of land that has been in the same condition for a long time. But it's, it's also on Mendoza Road, which is a thoroughfare. And although there's not much traffic out there now, there may be someday. But again, relative to this application, it's not being generated by the four future homes.
Okay. All right. Any, any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Mr. Schmidt, any rebuttal?
No, other than what I have previously said, that we'll try to work with the neighbors.
Okay. Anything from staff?
I would like to include that we consider that the application is consistent with a comprehensive plan that is intended for low density. And any potential improvement's gonna be analyzed at time of an aside plan if this is required.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and close the application, the hearing for the application. And I'd like to open it up for discussion, deliberation, or consider a motion.
I don't know if it's worthwhile, you know, stressing to the folks that are in the audience today, that this is, this is just a stepping spot.
Right.
You know, they're, they're required to come before us to make sure it's within the guidelines of the comprehensive plan, which has already been slated as future use RES3. It's just our job to make sure the property's in compliance. We're not approving anything. This isn't the final say, so it's gonna go before the county commission at a later hearing. And they can bring rotten tomatoes and stones at that time.
Yeah. Yeah. And another point I'd like to make is, I know a lot of people aren't familiar with the process. So we have two documents. We have to compare these applications due for compliance, the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. And we can't presume what the neighbor, or what the applicant's gonna do. The applicant's indicated that the intent is to split the lot or to divide it into four parcels. That hasn't happened yet. That's a process that may not be viable if, by chance, the, turning it into four lots requires a stormwater management system. It may not be feasible, so they may just go to two, two units. So it's, it's a very undefined process at this point. It's a straight zoning, so the applicant hasn't presented anything specific. So as it, as it's presented today, it's a single parcel of land being rezoned to RSF2.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Rutledge.
And it's always kind of my simple question to say, but in the development process, when they do these improvements or changes, they now come up to these new standards that we've set up, which is the modified flood study, the change in obligations of landowners and maintaining water on their property. And it's always been the question I have is, is it gonna improve the neighborhood's water condition? And, and the answer to that is always yes. So the concern about the water, I think, is always reasonable. Traffic is another issue. But, but in regards to the water, they cannot dump more water or manipulate the water in such a fashion that's detrimental. And, and the zoning does not change the zoning for the other people who have homestead, animals, and so forth. So I just think, as a point of clarity, I wanted to make sure, that's my expectation.
Agreed. The, one of the things that a lot of residents don't understand is the comprehensive plan, which was developed in, what was it, 89 or sometime?
1990.
1990. It, it kind of identified areas of trending activity. And this is an area that's RSF, I think it was RES UF3 or RES3, RES3, which is an indication, it's essentially a low-density kind of area. It's not, it's not gonna be, you know, 90 units to the acre, anything like that. It's only the maximum three units to the acre, I believe. So, but that's a, a plan that's been in place for a long time, since the 90s. I don't think it's changed. I don't recall in this area, anything changing. But, so with that, again, Chair will consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend adoption of Manatee County Zoning Ordinance Number Z2104.
Very good. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smock. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, hearing nothing additional. Chair will call the matter of vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Mr. Rutledge, did you vote aye?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Sorry. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Thank you. All right, next item is item number...
Three.
Three. PMU 1519, Perrin G, Perrin R2.
Yeah. Item number three, PMU 1519, GR2, I-75 Office Park, LLC, I-75 Office Park, amend and restate Sonning Ordinance, PMU 1519 GR, to revise the general development plan on more or less 1917 acres by adding 33,200 square feet of office space to develop, to the development option C. Option A is consisting of 99, 516 square feet of office space. Office B is consisting of 33,200 square feet of office space and 234 bed assistant living facility. And option C is consisting of 116 family residential units and the proposed 33,200 square feet of office space. The site is on PMU WPST Plan Development Mixed Use Watershed Protection Ever Special Treatment Overlay Districts and located east of I-75 on more or le, and more or less 250 feet west of town center parway on 77 Terrace East, Bradenton, Manatee County. The case manager is Mr. Marshall Robinson. And for the applicant here is Ms. Carol Clark and Mr. Rudosil, and this is presentation upon request.
Okay, thank you. All right. For the commissioners, have there been any ex parte communications regarding this application?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. All right, I have no speaker cards for this application, so I'm gonna just go ahead and open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on item number, item number three, PMU 1519? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask the commission, is there any need to see any additional information?
No, sir.
None at this time.
Okay, very good. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And Chair will consider a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Delez line.
I move to recommend approval per staff report, as recommended by staff.
Very good. We have a motion for approval. Is there any, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Ron. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Chair's gonna call the matter of vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Thank you. All right, item number four, Plan Amendment 21-04, Ordinance 21-29. Ms. Leidar?
Item number four, Plan Amendment 2104, Ordinance 2129, Transportation Element Text Amendment and Map Series Update. It's a legislative case and is county-initiated text amendment and associated traffic map series update to Element V Transportation Traffic Subelement, providing for text amendments to Element V Transportation Mass Transit Subelement, providing for an update of the traffic circulation map series, map 5.1, 5A, existing roadway functional classification, map 5B, 2045 Future Traffic Circulation Functional Classification, map 5C, 2045 Future Traffic Circulation Radeway Protection and Reservation, map 5D, 2045 Future Traffic Circulation Number of Lanes, map 5A, Future Traffic Circulation Designated Control Access Facilities, and map 5F, Future Traffic Circulation Strategic Intermodal System, SIS. And map 5F, future traffic circulation, strategic intermodal system, SIS and emerging SIS and associated table 501. And the case manager is Mr. Nelson Galeano, Transportation Division Planning Manager.
Very good. And this application is a legislative application, which means ex parte isn't applicable, and you don't have to be sworn for this particular item to speak. So, Mr. Galeano, can you come up and please make your presentation?
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. I am professional engineer registered here in Florida, professional transportation planner, professional traffic operational engineer, and member of the Transportation Professional Certification Board at federal level. I am here to present the traffic circulation plan update.
Mr. Galeano, is this a required update, like something that goes on a specific cycle?
Yes, it means I will address during the presentation.
Okay.
We are here to speak about the thoroughfare plan. The reasons the thoroughfare plan is needed, what is a traffic circulation plan and its relationship with the thoroughfare plan. During this presentation, thoroughfare plan and traffic circulation plan express the same concept and will be used without differentiation. This presentation explains what needs to be updated and amendment, and the step to finalize this update. The thoroughfare plan is regulated by Florida statutes and requires definition of performance standards. Our current traffic circulation plan is more than 10 years old and needs to be updated. This presentation focuses on the thoroughfare plan. How to finance the thoroughfare plan is a matter of further session. Please be aware. How to finance this thoroughfare plan is a matter of further session. The thoroughfare plan is a product of transportation planning activities. It provides a functional hierarchy of the major streets connecting origin and destinations. It provides for the orderly development of an adequate major street system as land development occurs or as traffic increases. It allows the reduction of construction cost of major streets mainly through coordination with private action, and allows, of course, the reduction of travel and transportation costs. It supports and enables private development with full acknowledge of the public in general, minimize disruption of people and businesses when construction occurs, allows the reduction of environmental impacts on air quality, wetlands, historical sites, park, and other public used recreational areas, archaeological sites, endangered areas, species, and neighborhoods. And this is an element of the comprehensive transportation plan, including transit, bicycle, and pedestrian modes, and that is an important thing. It's an element of comprehensive transportation plan, including transit, bicycle, and pedestrian modes. You will see later why. Why a thoroughfare plan? Essentially, the thoroughfare plan promotes safer travel conditions for all users, all users. It support future development. It serves areas of future development while minimizing construction cost and operational cost. And really important, it creates opportunities for utilitarian trips using other modes of transportation different than cars. It means from the multimodal approach. What is an utilitarian trip is the question. An utilitarian trip is a trip designated to be useful or practical with defined purpose rather than attractive or without purpose. Usually, when you go and drive, when you drive, you have a purpose. It's very seldom that you drive around without knowing where to go. When you get into a taxi, you tell the taxi driver, please bring me to this place. You don't sit on the backseat of the car and say nothing. You need purpose when you travel. Why a thoroughfare plan? Again, important, really important, it's the product of transportation planning activities, and essentially is thinking, doing, and verifying. Thinking, doing, and verifying. Transportation planning uses the thoroughfare plan for development review, and the development review mainly manage this update. Set priorities of infrastructure projects and concurrency purposes. What is concurrency? Concurrent is a grow management tool that requires to have the necessary and adequate infrastructure before the development occurs. What type of infrastructure? Water, pipelines, electricity, drink water, schools, parks, fire stations, libraries, transit, and of course, roads. The need of thoroughfare. In 1930, the rail system played an important role in for the region and for the county transportation system. In 1937, Florida State Road Department developed the thoroughfare plan integrating the river, railroad, and roadways. The next following four slices show how commercial and residential land uses have been developed in the last 60 years with expansion to the north and east areas of the county. The '60s, in the '80s, in the '20s, and 2020. And see, I want to, I want to you see the how intense is the development in the last 20 years. You see the color, and you see how the color migrate to the north and east. A healthy relationship between transportation and economic development allows a coherent thoroughfare plan to be able to address environmental impacts, congestion, and of course, to be prepared for the challenge of the future in terms of industrial activities, increase of consumption, and personal income, which implies prosperity for the county. In other words, the traffic circulation plan update promotes, promotes, increase the consumption of personal income and prosperity of the county through industrial future activities. The need for a thoroughfare update, oh, okay, how will we grow and how will we move? The thoroughfare plan should answer the question, how will we move considering how the future development will be? In other words, how will we grow and how the needs of the roadway users are on the holistic approach? We need to correlate how will we grow and how will we move. One of the purpose of the thoroughfare plan is to migrate from efficient streets, it means from the auto-centric approach, to effective streets, human-centric approach, to move people in cars by means of walking and biking while protecting the vehicular capacity of the roadway system. This update is a new concept, including safety, mobility, completed street connectivity, and accessibility. We don't want to reduce efficiency while gaining efficacy. In other words, we don't want to sacrifice anything regarding vehicular mobility or vehicular travel in order to introduce other modes of transportation like walking and How will we move? That is an important question. To answer the question, how will we move, we need to understand today's methods and today's needs. The vehicular level of service, LOS, is the common standard used by the county. The focus has been essentially dedicated to describe vehicular volumes on the streets we reflect on the number of lanes. More vehicles, more lanes. Since the thoroughfare plan should consider other components different than vehicular level of service, such economic mobility and safety, completed streets can become the future methods to address today's needs. It requires another perspective in terms of mobility by vibrancy, economic, safety, and perhaps the use of completed streets scorecards. Performance measures, this is one of the conditions of the update. During the last 40 years, the vehicular travel and vehicular safety have been the common performance measures to explain how we move. Now, this is critical to explain how will we be moving based on today's needs. Therefore, other set of performance measures come in play to understand the challenge we face now towards the future. Different federal regulation like Fixing America Surface Transportation Act or Moving Ahead of the, Moving Ahead to the Progress created the performance-based transportation program to be implemented on all modes of transportation. This topic will be developed in the next slices. How will we move? The thoroughfare plan contains the right-of-way, number of lane, planning number of lanes, compatibility with freight, transit, and local and regional connections, design a standard for non-motorcycle travel, vehicular level of service, concurrency and capital planning, interaction with the surrounding land use, consideration of all type of users. The thoroughfare could also include context classification, which is not part of this What is context classification? This is used and they know, or that, it is used to denote and define specific criteria to design transportation infrastructure by promoting safety, economic development, and quality of life. It also consider type of right-of-way user. It means the human element. The needs of travel at local and regional level, it means the economic element, and the opportunities and challenges each user faces. It means the technological and technical perspective of the trouble. With the context classification, the surrounding land use, the environment, helps define infrastructure form. For example, the environment on State Road 64, Manati Avenue, in the vicinity of the Lake Manati is rural, with trucks, horses, cowboys, and the design parameter are totally different than the State Road 64, Manati Avenue in front of this building. The context classification allows to move away from the traditional hierarchy of roads, expressways, arteries, collector, locals. This is a new trade-off between access and speed, which is about moving from efficient street to effective street. Context-based design considers roadway users and land users to improve accessibility and mobility for all modes. Focus on the type of trips that can be made provides opportunity to make the trip in several ways. How will we move? If context classification will be included within this thoroughfare update, Manati County will experience changes on all paradigms where the automobile was the main design and planning factor. It is about to establish new priorities where people can perform utilitarian activities by walking and bicycling without diminishing the possibility to drive. The more people walking and bicycling, the less people driving. It protects the current vehicular capacity of the roadway network because people are greater than cars. It requires innovation to understand how transportation facilities have been evolving. One good example is US 41. At the beginning, years ago, has been built to connect Bradenton and Sarasota, the direct connection. By the time, the function of the street changed because of the density increase along the roadway, and how it works today, it doesn't have, not too much what the purpose has been The correlation between how will we move and how will we grow can be explained, can be explained with the relationship between transportation and land use. This relation should be as smooth as possible. Context classification answers how this relationship between transportation and land use is. Florida Department of Transportation develops the transect, which explains each category for rural environment to the urban core where the road should be, should have different design criteria. Remember the example of whom? Manati Avenue. Different speeds, different configuration, different functions, therefore, different contexts. Because human activities on the rural environment are very distinctive with respect to the human activities of the urban core, speed and interactions with the adjacent space of the road are totally different. Again, please relate Lake Manati with the cowboy and the building with the blue collar executive with ties. One positive advantage is the Manati Complete Street Policy. Manati County has a regulatory frame which allows creating roads for all users based on the complete street policy. However, it's the context classification which support the implementation of completed Let me change gears with other aspects we need to consider. This isn't the way we build roads with high technology. Okay, public expectations. Public expressed concerns about congestion, more development happening, lack of capacity of roadway, and city-county as reactionary and not proactive. Public show expectation regarding congestion elimination, more lanes now, more signalized intersection now, more roadway, and more safety. The thoroughfare plan supports the creation of stroke communities by thinking of streets as community places because on the streets we interact. We need to see the streets as place of interaction. We see streets as tools of growth because we see prosperity around the streets, along the streets. We have here activity corridors. Yes, we have activity centers, but we have also activity corridors. We see the public street corridors as ecosystems because we coexist along the different corridors, and the streets are public right-of-way. The thoroughfare plan supports the creation of stroke communities by foreseeing problems and solve them when they occur. This is about time and efficiency. This is the relationship when and how. It reduces future additional right-of-way costs, means it changed the perspective of being proactive to reactive. It allows the holistic network to operate smoothly, improving connectivity and accessibility with a multi-user perspective, and it creates sense of confidence for investment with the community. And it creates sense of confidence for investment with the community interest. The traffic circulation plan. The traffic circulation planning is the formal name of the thoroughfare plan. It's part of the county comprehensive plan and is presented in the Table five, this last one, and my map five series. For this update, we check the existing and future functional classification, the new roads, the right-of-way alignments, facility type for major and minor arteries and collectors, and the strategic interconnected system. What we do want to amend with this update to explain the thoroughfare plan update right-of-way is the focus of this presentation to make it shorter and concise. It means right-of-way allowed us to explain to you better how is the update. I want to emphasize on flexibility, the term flexibility. The alignments here on this presentation and on this update and on the plan are not definitive. It means it requires a final alignment because the final alignment depends on land acquisition, it means in terms of process, time, it means time, and in terms of cost. It requires also environmental issues. Right now, we consider environmental in a superficial way. And construction cost, it means is it different to building wetland or building bridges or overpasses if needed. And that is the reason of flexibility. Alignment, flexibility alignment, it means the alignment to be flexible in order to comply with land acquisition, environmental issues, and construction costs. Okay, here, this is the adopted, this is the adopted right-of-way twenty forty-five future circulation plan. And this is the difference between the old and the new one. You see, you see some, it means that is sorry, that is the the old one superimposed with the new one, and you see the difference. There are some areas that require more detail. In this context, we have five groups and two special areas to explain the update. And let me go group by group. That is the group number one. The main, the main this is proposed toward twenty forty-five. It increases the connectivity north-south with Buffalo and forty-nine forty-nine Street East, east and west of I seventy-five. And the most important thing here is it considers an overpass on twenty-ninth Street S. Essentially because when we have Buffalo complete and forty-nine, we will have pressure on the east-west connections. We will have also the Florida International Trade Mall and also the traffic road along three oh one. And we believe that the overpass can mitigate this pressure. And here you see the old and the new superimposed. And more or less, we have the same with this update. The group number two is the Fort Hammer and Sograss Road. The first is the interchange study area, let me explain about it later. We have the Piney Road with a new proposal right-of-way of hundred fifty. New roads, Sweetwater Preserve, JJ Road, Fort Hammer Road along from three oh one to Buckeye with four lanes, a new alignment. We have FF Road and Sograss with an updated alignment. This is a little bit annoying saying that way because we are showing in our plan an interchange in another county. And this is essentially because FDOT requires coordination for an interchange first. This is in Hilboro, but this is on our update because it impacts us heavily. This is a game changer to the mobility pattern of the auto travel in the north-south axle from two, Leywood Ranch. It's the parallel facility of I seventy-five and over the river. That is the reason, this is really important, this interchange in our update. If the update happens, probably Fort Hammer Road between the interchange and Buckeye will be six lanes, a six-lane facility. The group number three, I believe this is one of the most controversial of this update. It expands the coverage of the roadway system. It considers some environmental aspects. Mulholland has been for decades in the traffic circulation plan, is not a new addition. This, the Mulholland, I want to emphasize on Mulholland because of the comments we have received. Mulholland or this area is one of the less connected area on the county. And Mulholland will relieve, will relieve pressure and ensure redundancy in transportation system in case of emergency, accidents, and/or repairs. It increases the connectivity and accessibility of the entire area. And again, this is the delta map. It means we modify some alignments, but there are really nothing new on this update, especially on this area. And let me show again the difference. We superimpose the old with the new. The next group is the Leywood Ranch. We have Lina Road alignment. We have forty-four East Extension alignment. The Post Boulevard, a new four-lane facility. Ragland Parkway, we can propose four lanes and new alignment. The Uline and Burnside Boulevard alignment. And forty-four is the east-west connection in the county. It's the direct access to the beach. This is one, it will be one of the our activities corridors. It connects with Cortez. This is an important road in the east-west travel for the county. We have here also the elimination of the Tara Bridge. Has been discussions about the elimination of the entire Tara connection. It means the elimination of a roadway that has been built in nineteen ninety-four. The elimination of the Sunday Tara connection will imply losing opportunities in terms of maintenance, in terms of access management, project ranking and founding with the MPO if applicable. Perhaps also dedication for energy relief program, just in case. It means this is, from the technical perspective, jumping or modifying from arterial to collector or to collector to arterial is okay or from local to collector, this is okay. But downgrading or demording the functional classification usually is not well-accepted essentially because losing opportunities for maintenance, again, access management, ranking founding, and perhaps emergency relief programs if applicable. The group five is the Southwest County Lake Flores. The county, Lake Flores has a land development code. And it includes ING and the Lake Flores. It has a new thoroughfare between eighty-six and seventy-fifth Street West. There are some aligning changes. KK Road has been deleted on this update. We have also the special area, Bradenton-Palmetto Connector Study Area. There are a PDNE study area consistent with the MPO and FDOT plans. Okay, the, that is an important topic also. The relationship between land use and transportation has been explained by means of the context classification. However, we need to see this relationship from the infrastructure planning perspective. This slide shows the future land use map and the future development area boundary. It shows also where the development can occur under current regulation. The area east of the future development area boundary is classified as agricultural. The black lane is the future development area boundary. If the future land use information is superimposed with the proposed thoroughfare plan, it is easy to identify which areas will be covered for the update. This is what we have here on the screen. Please note the current future development area boundary is in purple. The proposed thoroughfare plan is going beyond to the east where the future development area boundary is located. This final depiction shows the future development area boundary with potential areas where development is in process due to application or other planning activities. It implies the need to correlate thoroughfare plan updates with the future land use plan with a potential discussion of relocating the future development area boundary to the east and with the vision the county has for the next twenty years. Which steps action are needed to complete the update? As I started, this update is a result of planning process. The development review is our main data source. And for this reason, we coordinate a lot with stakeholders. We have a meeting with the Planning Task Force. And today, we are here to present to you the update. We expect positive action and get transmitted on October twenty-first by the board and the adoption hearing in December second. Before I finish this presentation, I want to indicate that the value of our current transportation infrastructure without the land acquisition is about thirty-two point five billion dollar, the existing value. The proposed value is about forty-one point eight billion dollar. If we materialize in the next twenty-five years, this plan, we will need about nine point three billion dollar. That is the reason of the plan. It means to set priorities and define the future of the county. With this one, I'm here for your questions. Thank you so much.
Very good, thank you. Questions for Mr. Galliano? I do have a question regarding the context classification. That's something that I hadn't really picked up on previously. Can you explain how that is implemented? I think that was under the section for implementation, is that correct?
Sir, we don't consider the context classification on this update. It required a lot of points to tweak, and this is not part of this update. We present it in order to understand the perspective we want to go through.
So generally speaking, though, the context classification is how the road is used, is how it's classified?
Yes, it means what happened is, what happened is, let me explain in terms of planning. Right now, our regulation speaks essentially about vehicle travel and performance measures are related to vehicles, it means auto-oriented. Level of service, delays for the vehicular travel. There are almost silence in terms of non-motorized travel. The idea is to use context classification in order to incorporate the non-vehicular travel into the system in order to have, to make possible the performance-based planning and programming. It means we set performance measures, we set goals for, in the way we want to move, not only for vehicular travel, but also for non-motorized travel. And with them, it impacts the budgeting, but also the planning exercise. And that is the purpose of including the context classification. But again, it's not, it's not part of this update.
Right, and you mentioned, you mentioned two processes, I'm sorry. You mentioned two processes, you mentioned the planning and the budgeting.
Yes.
What we're talking about is the planning.
Yes, we are talking about the planning, we are not talking about budgeting.
So how far are we looking out into the future?
Twenty forty-five.
Twenty forty-five?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's
That's the plan.
And does, does the plan as presented, does it require improvements that are shown? Is that, is this a good indication of work that the county is going to do over the next couple of years?
Navigation card we have for the next twenty years, until we update in five, ten years, depend on. Depend on the needs because you know the economic dictates where to go.
In your experience, does, do these roads get constructed in that timeframe? Or are the improvements done in that timeframe, or is it?
Yes, sir, we need nine point three billion dollar to do that.
So the fact that it's a plan is disconnected from the budgeting part of it. I mean, this is just
This is not disconnected. It means we get projects from this plan to be founded.
Well, it's not disconnected, but there's a nine billion dollar gap.
Okay, you got it.
Might as well be disconnected. Can you, can you provide some additional information regarding the process? So counties, the county staff, you know, has put a lot of effort into this. And I think there were a couple mentions of other agencies or groups that might be involved. Is DOT typically a party to the process for updating the plan?
Yes, sir, it means, that is a good question. Our network, we, there are different jurisdictions in our network. Of course, this is part of the interstate system, we don't have any control on the I seventy-five. But we interact a lot with FDOT. And we interact a lot with FDOT in the FDOT roadways. It means US forty-one, Cortez, Manati Avenue. And we set the tone in the direction we want to go. And FDOT is partnered with us. And that is the interaction we have with FDOT, yes, sir. And of course, we have full interaction with the stakeholders. It means with developers, they set again the tone where to go because this, the update is the planning, the transportation planning result of our activities in terms of the development review.
And is the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, also involved in updating?
Yes, this is aligned, the project is aligned, it means the update is aligned with the guidelines of the MPO, yes. Of course, there are details that we don't consider, and let me explain, for example, try, no, boost lanes along US forty-one. We are not speaking about this one right now because this is in the way we operate, not in the way we have the system. This is two different levels. One is how will be the infrastructure and the other, how will be operated? How will be the operation of this infrastructure?
With regard to the MPO, they're involved in the planning part, but they're also involved in some of the budgeting?
Yes, what happened is there are, we have, we have a lot of data. I don't want to go in detail with the data. And the data, and we share the data with the MPO. Sometimes we disagree, sometimes we agree, sometimes the information came late, sometimes it means there are a lot of discussions. But yes, there are alignment between what the But yes, there are alignment between what the MPO proposal has on the long-range transportation plan and what we have here on our update.
Okay. I've got just two more quick items that I think might help, again, provide some context. So how are road classifications determined? Is it by the use or is it by the, is it more of a planning element? Is it the current use that helps determine the classification? Arterial collector, local roads? Or is it more looking forward to potential...
This is the function. This is, when you speak about arterial collector and locals, we are speaking about the function. We are not speaking about the form and we deny what happened on the adjacent area of the road. Stay Road sixty-four is an arterial, but you see what happened in Lake Manati. The adjacent road is an arterial and, but it doesn't have to do with the adjacent, adjacent land use that we have here in, 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 in the core, urban core. It means, this is the function. Arterials are dedicated more for high traffic, high traffic, high value, high-value traffic, long, long, long trips. Collectors as name indicate, collects from residential and, and go to the arterial. This is the hierarchical process to develop a network. But this is really not related with the land use. That's the reason we speak here about context classification because this is in the way we integrate the land use and transportation in order to be more efficient.
And the example you used, I think you mentioned Mulholland, there was a lot of communication, you said, related to Mulholland. The classification is currently what?
Right now, this is rural major collector.
It's a, it's a collector.
Yes.
That's based on the, the way it's used today, the way that roadway is used today?
Yes, sir.
Are you changing the classification?
We wanna eliminate the rural and urban.
Okay.
We wanna say collector.
Just across the board, not just for this roadway, but across the board?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right. I think those, those were answers to the questions I have. Mr., Mr. Ron.
Mr. Galliano, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
How are you? Just a quick question. This update today is a snapshot in time, correct? Will there be other future updates coming before the planning commission to move on to the B O C C? Or is this, is this it till twenty forty-five?
No, 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 it means we need to update again. It means that this is a living document, this is a living activity. We need to tweak. We are humans, we are not perfects. We know that, that there are areas of improvement. We need to find consensus what we are doing. And if it's possible, then in one year, two years, we come here, I can say, hey, we need this update. There are a lot of unknowns right now to, to say what type of updates we need. But yes, we need, but sure, we will be promoting the inclusion of context classification on the next update. It will be, I will say in two, three years. It has a lot of connotations in terms of many things, many topics. That's the reason we are not including right now. Our focus is to comply with the, with the state mandate. And that's the reason we are here updating the traffic circulation plan.
Okay, thank you.
Again, any other comments for Mr. Galliano or questions, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes, sir. Mr. Galliano, thank you for this. I, I thought it was tremendously helpful and insightful. So first thing I wanted to know is, will this be available online so I can download it and share it with some people that are involved in development and transportation issues?
Yes, sir. This is on the agenda. The agenda has been publicized. I, we included minor, minimal corrections, typos, script errors, it means, but yes, you can contact me and I can provide anyone the information related to this update in the way they want.
Okay, perfecto. And then I had a couple of other questions and I, full disclosure, you know, I had some involvement with Lake Flores and hope to continue to be working with them. But how much, how much of the county's roads and streets have been, have taken advantage of the Street Smart program? You know, in other words, we have this design for accommodating and enhancing and providing that. Do you have any idea how many miles of roads have been engaged in that or used that as a process?
In Lake Flores specifically or in general?
No, 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 just in the, in the, in the county as a whole. In other words, who's taking advantage of this scheme that we've developed?
I don't know, sir. I need to search, but initially I would say smarter streets, I would say we don't have too many.
But, but places like Lakewood Ranch certainly are in that design scheme, if not specifically that though, right?
Yes, but if you compare the length, the total length and, and you see how long is what we have in Lake, in Lakewood Ranch is less than one percent.
Yeah, okay. The other question I had, which I am very curious about and I see a lot more in, you know, I work in downtown Tampa a lot and the, the accommodation to things like carts, you know, scooters, all kinds of, you know, singular tire transportation. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of new stuff coming out and people are using these transportation modes. I, I'm curious, in the study and in the analysis, are we making provision for the expansion, inclusion and the safety of kind of having those transport? You know, electric bikes have gotten crazy, golf carts have always been around, but, but there's all this new momentum of travel that doesn't mean getting in your car. Is there specific detail for that kind of conduct, design, development and use?
That is a good question and it, it does, okay, you are speaking about micro-mobility.
Yes.
Welcome, welcome, micro-mobility. But the, the challenge of micro-mobility in Manati County is the, the location where the activities are intense and essentially is downtown Bradenton and some streets in Lakewood Ranch and stop. It means we don't have really the density we need to speak, to start speaking about micro-mobility. And it requires also coordination between different jurisdictions. It means it's not about what the county wants. It's about what the city of Bradenton wants and how can we interact? Manati Avenue is a good example. It means it will be nice if we, we have a, a micro-mobility connection between the Bradenton Downtown and, and the beach along, along Manati Avenue because this is the more active connection. But if we don't coordinate and if we don't have the intensity we need, speaking about micro-mobility essentially is a dream.
And I guess you don't have any idea what the percentage of micro-mobility is as the overall transportation? I miss, it's...
We, we have, we have some data. I, I, I don't have the data on my head right now, but we have, from our mobility plan, I know it was released yesterday, two days ago. About twenty, no, seventy-five percent of our trips are vehicular trips. Eleven percent are transit trips and, and others. And we have seven, between six and seven percent bicycle and vehicular trip and by, walking trips. These trips require, no, are, are susceptible to be, to be done by micro-mobility. It means we are speaking about six, seven percent of our total trips to become micro, micro-mobility trips. In order to do that, I apologize, but I, I sound repetitive, but I say we need land use diversity because micro-mobility is required short-distance local trips. And when we have only residential, the, there are no possibility to do a trip in a scooter because the distance is too long. It means we need short trips to, to, to start speaking about micro-mobility. And that's the reason I say intensity of the activities and land use diversity.
Okay, listen, I think this is a great report. I, I like the idea that we're looking that far out because I know everybody that comes in about the rezoning issues, one of the key things is traffic. What are we doing? How are we doing it? So I appreciate your intensity of focus. I, I think the graphics you put together for this is very helpful for me. I like the understanding of the cubular areas of study. So I just wanna say thanks for this presentation and the information. And I do think it raises a question for professionals in the industry around our community that, you know, intensity of development and ease of access besides cars is something to keep in mind. So, so thanks for that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and go to public comment. Okay. All right. I'm, I've got several speaker cards here and I'll go ahead and call your name and if you would, come forward. You don't have to be sworn for this particular application that's being heard. If you would, please try to summarize your concerns that we can, after the citizen comments, we can either discuss or speak to specifically if you have specific concerns. That'll, that'll help get some answers and convey some information. So the first speaker card I have is Patrick Bastine. If you would, come forward, please. And just state your name. Thank you.
Do you have a handout if you could pass this? My name is Patrick Bastian and I have been sworn in. I'm with the Twin Rivers Twenty-Ninth Court East and Southern Oaks Communities located in Parish. And we were between Mulholland and Golf Course Road west of Rye Road. We oppose the change to the transportation plan exhibits B and H, page twenty-two, because it combines Western Mulholland to Fort Hamer Extension Project with the Eastern Mulholland to Rye Road Extension Project. These projects are separate in the existing plan. The Western Mulholland Extension, which would necessitate building a bridge across Campbell Creek, would require extensive studies, engineering and financing and is presumably many years old. The Eastern Mulholland Extension to Rye Road is by comparison relatively short, inexpensive and could be completed with much less of an impact on current county plans. We are working with the county to get the eastern extension to Rye Road completed sooner and are concerned that combining the two projects into one will jeopardize that effort. We support completing the Mulholland to Rye Road Extension because in twenty nineteen, the Southern Oaks Development situated between Twin Rivers and Rye Road was open. An inner neighborhood western access for Southern Oaks was created by a Twin Rivers Twenty-Ninth Court East and it became the cut-through for east and southern access for traffic between Rye Road and Twin Rivers. The route was never intended to be a main thoroughfare. Its purpose is a secondary route for emergency access to Southern Oaks. It is a winding path through several residential streets and neighborhoods of young families and while on its way from Twin Rivers to Rye Road. More than five hundred vehicles a day, including tractor trailers and construction vehicles, use this residential route to cut-through between Rye Road and Twin Rivers and the numbers are rising. We are facing additional development in, of Twin Rivers Phase Five and the Reasoner Properties, which are landlocked in Twin Rivers and will use our route for Rye Road access since Mulholland Extension to Rye Road stops a few hundred yards short of Rye Road. The huge Rye Ranch development directly across from us now threatens even more easterly traffic from Twin Rivers. We recently met with county leaders to raise awareness of our issues and are already working with county departments to implement measures such as traffic taming along our route. But most importantly, we are trying to initiate the completion of the Mulholland Extension to Rye Road project sooner since it is currently not in any county construction plans. This is the only permanent solution to our problem since the Mulholland East to Rye Road Project is the county's planned easterly connector road for the area, not Twenty-Ninth Court East and Southern Oaks. Therefore, we ask that the current plan, which keeps the west and east extensions of Mulholland as separate projects, be maintained in the new plan, not combined into one big project. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker card I have is Ed Hughley. I'll go ahead and read them so you all can queue up for the interest of time. After Mr. Hughley, we have Jack Bluestein.
Good morning, I'm Ed Hewlett and I've been sworn in. And I'm here to speak specifically about the extension of the Mulholland Road eastward towards Rye Road. Recently, one of my neighbors, Audrey's, her husband passed away. He had a stroke, took thirty minutes for emergency vehicles to get to him and he passed away. This is a grave concern to us that live in the community and we think that there's a vital and a needed extension of Mulholland to Rye Road for emergency vehicles. It's a disparity that this hasn't already been established. That area of Mulholland has been established internally but never extended and that structure itself, unlike at Lakewood Ranch, was never completed and should have been completed. With your consideration, I would like you to seriously think about the extension of the Mulholland to the Rye Road section. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Bluestein. And after Mr. Bluestein, we have Louis Barnes.
My name is Jack Bluestein. I lived on Twenty-Ninth Court East. My wife and I purchased a lot in twenty thirteen and Medallion built our home in twenty fourteen. I'm the third person here to talk about that extension from Mulholland to Rye Road. Right now, we're the Twenty-Ninth Court East is the only direct link to Rye Road for the seven-hundred-plus Twin Rivers homes already built, the two-hundred to be finished in the next one to three years and one-hundred-and-thirty-plus homes that will be built on the Reasoner Property if that project's approved by the county. Twenty-Ninth Court East was marketed and sold by Medallion Homes to all users as a court, the standard definition of which is the same as cul-de-sac. Our small residential street with fifteen homes is not only not a court, it has now become a major thoroughfare. There are now approximately five hundred cars and trucks passing through our court every day. The vast majority of the vehicles are exceeding the speed limit. Between Twenty-Ninth Court East and Rye Road sits fifty-eight Southern Oaks homes on narrow, curving streets with short driveways and many vehicles. The cars and trucks are too numerous to fit into their small garages, so they line the streets. This is the opposite of complete streets that Mr. Galliano was talking about. We have met Southern Oaks homeowners who share our dismay at the current traffic volume and speed. They do not allow their children to play in the front yards due to the danger posed by the traffic, which will only increase if the Mulholland to Rye Road Extension is not approved and expedited. If the Mulholland Extension does not go through to Rye, the new fire station on Rye Road will mean that fire trucks and emergency vehicles will have to go down Twenty-Ninth Court East in order to get to any emergency calls from our court through the western part of Twin Rivers. Long-body trucks and trailers cannot turn around in Southern Oaks. Instead, they travel down Twenty-Ninth Court East onto One-Sixty-Second Street where they make illegal U-turns in the middle of the road. In short, the present situation on our street poses numerous problems for both us and Southern Oaks, but eliminating the Mulholland Extension would be disastrous. We, we support keeping them as two separate projects if that will advance the speed of completion. Right now, it's not in the budget to do anything on Mulholland Road between twenty-two and twenty-six. We'd like to get that expedited. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. After Mr. Louis Barnes, we'll have Mark Fairwoods. Thank you.
Ah, good morning. I'm Louis Barnes, been sworn in. Appreciate you hearing me today.
Thank you.
In regards to the Jones Development, I just wanted to ask that the nightlights, because of noise, excuse me, a little nervous. I would like to ask that the, the lights at nighttime have like downward shining lights kind of reduce light pollution? Because we're used to living out in the dark.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure he's talking about this project. I think he means, he said Jones, he might mean Jones Farm.
Is that, sir, are you talking about the transportation plan or...
No, I was with Jones, that's why I didn't know why you were calling me up.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have the wrong number here. That was just a, a test, a practice, so...
Well, good, I needed some practice anyway, thank you.
Good job. Sorry, sorry for the confusion. We were trying to place it and got a little confused. All right. Next speaker card we have is Mark Freder... I, I went to school in Arcadia, so forgive me.
Hold on.
My name is Mark Frederwitz and I have been sworn in. I'm with the community here with Twin Rivers. I come from New York, so we left Florida since we'd been down here four years ago. But when we bought from Medallion Homes in Twin Rivers four years ago, it was, it was a dead-end street. We, we thought it was a court. It's Twenty-Ninth Court East, court. it was a dead-end street. We thought it was a court. It's 29th Court East, court. Now, the whole idea, which I got the 62-page report from the county a couple of years ago, my wife and I were in the beginning of this whole fight, that we were surprised one day to wake up and the trees are going down, and what is now Southern Oaks became a full-fledged neighborhood. What we did know was back in 14, and I may be incorrect on the dates, that that was zoned a certain amount of parcels per acre, and it was quickly made three times that amount, which increased the density, without a corresponding study of what it could impact and how it can impact Twin Rivers. The impact study was done on Ry Road, how it's going to impact Ry Road, but not Twin Rivers.
I hate to interrupt, but we need to keep the discussion relevant to the transportation study.
Well, I think it's kind of related, because it does, it doesn't impact the whole thing, why this whole group is here today.
If you could, maybe correlation, how does it relate to the transportation study?
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, I'll just summarize real quickly. We get 500 cars a day going up and down our street, and the whole idea of Mall Holland could be an idea that our group has put forth in terms of helping alleviate that problem that we have. But the, the infrastructure, let me just discuss it. I know it doesn't relate, but it's caused all of us in the street to get thrown in the floodplain because of improper studies being done back then. That's all I got to say, because I'm limited to the discussion at hand, so.
Yes, sir. Your street, when you say your street, you're talking about 29th Court East.
29th Court East.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Very good. Next speaker card I have is Bruce Kittinger. And after that, Danielle Kubria. And that would be the last speaker card, and we'll open it up to anybody else who wishes to come forward.
Thank you for the correct pronunciation, my name. I'm here to represent 29th Court East, and I'm in favor of the Mall Holland Extension, the eastbound extension from Mall Holland to Ry Road. That's been in the plans for over 20 years. It's been promised for over 20 years. Plans have been made of all natures based upon that connection coming into existence. And so I strongly support the connection of Mall Holland Road to Ry Road, and that the commission should consider that as a thing that will be done. Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Very good. Hold on one moment. What was that?
He needs to state his name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you state your name?
Bruce Kittinger.
Very good. For the record, she's taking notes. Very good. Next speaker card, Daniella Kubria.
Do you have the clicker? I have a form as well, so I can, if somebody can increase my time to 10 minutes, please.
Is it right, right here?
Mr. Chair, the, Danielle submitted an email saying she represents six people, but I don't know whether sign off is for six people. Do you have that?
Yes, ma'am.
And she's progressing 10 minutes.
Okay, that's, that's fine. We're here to get all the information that helps us make good decisions, so.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Danell Kubria. This is my son Kubria to observe today, and I've been a Twin Rivers resident since 2008. My purpose of my basis of my presentation today is that I'm asking the Manatee County Planning Commission to recommend removal of a segment of Mall Holland Road as a collector road in its traffic circulation plan. I will start off by submitting a petition that I wrote and distributed for support. The petition in part reads, "Extending the existing Mall Holland Road from Fort Hamer Road through to County Road 675 will create many unintended consequences for residents, such as increased traffic, noise, crime, and unauthorized access to our amenities, decreased privacy and property values, and destruction of protected wetlands and habitats. We are the residents that are directly affected by Mall Holland Road. Some of us reverse out of our driveways on Mall Holland Road, our front doors face, and our mailboxes are located on this road. We take our kids to the bus stop, walk our dogs, and ride our bikes down this road, and our neighborhood holiday parade routes are along this road. Every Twin River resident, new and old, use Manatee River Access or are going for a leisurely neighborhood drive are traveling on or intersecting at Mall Holland Road. Every resident of River Plantation and McKinley Oaks access their homes via this road. There is no impact study or staff recommendation report that can give you more answers than the residents that use this road now and as it is. As of yesterday, the petition had obtained 689 signatures of support. I validated the supporters, so I can actually show the commission the support of 447 households. Half of those are in Twin Rivers that support these changes. I would like to break down a few of these points outlined in the petition into further detail. The first one is of traffic. The segment of Mall Holland Road will show minimal transportation benefit to Manatee County because of its location. The traffic gridlock that occurs on I-75 moves commuters to Fort Hamer, north to south. When Fort Hamer is backed up because of multiple new and close-together traffic lights or school zones, you will already be past Mall Holland Road intersection or have traveled to County Road 675, US 301, or Golf Course Road to Ry Road, and then on to State Road 64. This is the same in reverse, south to north. Commuters would travel on Upper Manatee River Road to Ry Road, whereas all of these identified roads are scheduled to be improved to four-lane roadways to handle current and future capacity and will allow residents multiple options for their travel. The growth of Parish as shown is primarily north and east, where there is already approved infrastructure improvements in all of these roads. Let Golf Course Road be the four-lane collector that it has always been designed to be. The BOCC just approved Canoe Creek Expansion and SM Ranch, which will improve Golf Course Road as part of its development plan. A new homeowner in SM Ranch will not commute perpendicular to Mall Holland Road. Mall Holland Road is surrounded by neighborhoods that already exist. There is very little growth to occur within the box to necessitate this connection. I am not requesting to close a segment of road that is open. I am not requesting to redirect the traffic to use another road network. My home is built. My neighborhood is almost completely built. This thoroughfare is not. All traffic uses the network of roads that currently exist and will do so more efficiently when Manatee County's infrastructure upgrades occur. It is one and a half miles from Mall Holland at Fort Hamer to Golf Course Road. It is 1.3 miles from Mall Holland at Ry to Golf Course Road. This easy, two-minute commute far outweighs any negative impacts for us and costs for the county. Twin Rivers covenants prohibit on-street parking, yet this thoroughfare will constantly have road hindrances. What about service trucks? They are too large to pull in our driveways, a landscaping truck, propane truck, delivery truck. Will I now be prohibited to use these services? My last of traffic is the fire and EMS response. Fire and EMS are located on US Highway 301 and nearby access and have access to County Road 675 and Fort Hamer. The new approved station number two will be located directly on Ry Road. Both stations would approve via arterial roadways and the shortest, most direct distance to hospitals, which are located south of Parish, not east to west. My second point is of noise. The LDC Section 701.1 is to establish the minimum landscaping, screening standards, and criteria that are necessary to achieve the desired quality of life. All thoroughfares, even prior to this ordinance, have landscaping designs. These include three canopy trees, six understory evergreen trees, and 33 evergreen shrubs per 100 linear feet of buffer, with setbacks and 50-foot buffer zones, all used to mitigate noise and reduce light occurring on thoroughfares that are adjacent to residential neighborhoods. Here is Harrison Ranch Boulevard. Note the six-foot privacy wall separating the boulevard with adjacent property. It also has a median, canopy trees, and shrubs. An aerial picture shows all of the reverse frontage lots. Here is Chen Road at Kingsville Lakes. Note the setback, buffer, landscaping, and fencing, and reverse frontage lots. Here is Golf Course Road at Gamble Creek Estates and Canoe Creek. It has a berm, fencing, and plentiful landscaping. An aerial picture, sorry. An aerial picture shows all of the lots are reverse frontage. Here is Mall Holland Road west of Gamble Creek at River Plantation and Chelsea Oaks. It has fencing and landscaping. An aerial picture shows all lots are located within its neighborhoods and reverse frontage lots. And yet here is Mall Holland Road in Twin Rivers. We are not adjacent to a designated thoroughfare. We are abutted to it. An aerial picture shows the front or forward-facing lots, and just three canopy trees are required on our home sites. Mall Holland Road was added to the thoroughfare map in 2001, yet not functionally classified, whereas Twin Rivers GDP had unfortunately just been submitted. This timeline shows the county had multiple opportunities to offer recommendations to change this planned development with the foresight of Mall Holland Road always being thoroughfare, yet dissecting a neighborhood. Recommendations could have altered the design of the lots, require additional landscaping, buffer zones, screening, and other mitigating options, other than a notice to buyer received three days prior to closing. This GDP would not pass through staff review with an approval today. My third point is of crime. I ran an MCSO query for all dispatch calls to and only Mall Holland Road in the last five years. There were 123 calls on this one road that is currently two miles long. That is an average of two calls per month. The most calls were noted as suspicious vehicles, suspicious circumstances, traffic complaints, traffic stops, and trespassing. I then ran an MCSO crime mapping report for the last six months within a five-mile radius of Mall Holland Road. This shows 99 reports, an average of 16 calls per month, an increase of 800%. The most incidents noted were assaults, vehicle break-ins, and theft. These roadways make a trend. Easy entrances and exits off adjacent main thoroughfares invite and enable criminals to enter a neighborhood, do the crime, and get away. Please do not invite this activity to our neighborhoods. This would happen with Mall Holland Road connecting at Gamble Creek, as well as connecting at Ry Road. We know this because we are having reoccurring issues at 29th Court East, which ties to the neighborhood of Southern Oaks that you've heard from my neighbors. My fourth point is of decreased privacy. Mall Holland Road is in Twin Rivers, not a separate entrance into a development, not a turning lane to enter or exit. You are riding by my front door. This is where my kids play kickball, in my front yard. This thoroughfare would be an intrusion. There would be zero privacy. There are 32 forward frontage homes and 36 driveways in Twin Rivers on Mall Holland Road with no designed thoroughfare landscaping, no sound mitigation, no type of barrier on a potential four-mile straight speedway without stop signs, and we've asked for them. There is only one other designated thoroughfare that dissects an existing neighborhood in Parish. This aerial picture shows Neil Holmes at Silver Leaf. It was designed as a thoroughfare only to be able to satisfy the CLC criteria at US Highway 301, so he could also zone commercial use. But also note, he designed the neighborhood with reverse frontage lots, not abutting the thoroughfare. My last point is that of destruction of protected wetlands, wildlife habitats, and costs. Mall Holland Road Extension would have to cross over Granville Creek. We have been told for years that the environmental studies would show an impact that would be too costly to mitigate. The existing footbridge, walkway, and dead-end flood at every large rainfall. We were told a design and construction bid was done, and it came out at close to $20 million. What is the likelihood of this segment being built at that cost? There are sections in the Land Development Code now that establish the standards for development, and most importantly, provisions that will be harmonious with the existing communities. But what does this do for a residential neighborhood whose GDP was approved in Parish during the times when these codes were made effective 16 years ago? And it isn't a plural neighborhoods. It is just one, Mall Holland Road and Twin Rivers. Let's talk alternatives. What about severing this segment only? The growth is north and east and will be served by County Road 675. Mall Holland Road Extension, as identified on the map, can still be designed and constructed as a thoroughfare properly, with a berm, fencing, landscaping, soundwall, et cetera, a buffer between the thoroughfare and any new development. And final, I hope I have taken the Planning Commission on a drive today and in my front yard, and I've shown what our home life would be like outside of our front door if Mall Holland Road continues to be designated as a thoroughfare east of Gamble Creek. Planned development zoning of a project establishes buffer zones, setbacks, landscaping, and lot design, and to help mitigate potential adverse effects. This can't be built on my Mall Holland Road now, so please help us protect our neighborhood and my kids and our quality of life by recommending our changes and removing this segment for good. The rest of my presentation can be found in your agenda packet, because clearly I'm wordy. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, this, this isn't a sporting event that might have the opposite effect of what you would wish it to have. So, we, we appreciate, if you have something to say, please step forward and say it. So, with that, that was all the speaker cards. But if there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this application, please come forward now. Anyone at all? We have a Zoom call? Okay. Go ahead, caller. If you would, please state your name as soon as you're connected.
Caller ending in 590, please speak.
Yes, my name is Kathy Woolley, and I'm the Community Affairs Chairperson for Terra Golf and Country Club. And I've come to speak today particularly on, with the goal of having Terra Boulevard not appear on the traffic circulation plan as a thoroughfare. It has never previously been a thoroughfare, was always, hoped to be a thoroughfare if the county were to build the Terra Bridge. But if you will look on your Group Four page of the circulation plan, you will note that the Terra Bridge is no longer in the county's long-term road plan. Our road classification as a collector should really be reduced to a local road. With no bridge at the end of Terra Boulevard across the Braden River, the function, not the form, and the adjacent uses, and the LOS of D, just really make this a local road. Speeding is a continual problem on the road. It's two lanes on each side per part of the road, and then a single lane on each side on the south side. We definitely are a community place, because Terra Golf and Country Club is a golf cart community, with half of our community built on one side and the half on the other. We are also, to let you know, a perfect transportation mode, because we have micro-mobility. We have biking, we have golf carts, we have walking, because we have on the corner of our internally-focused DRI, a public grocery store, a gecko's, a pizza place, a dentist, a small neighborhood services commercial center. We're right across from Creekwood, and so our owners can age in place. We're not a 55 and up community, but we are a community that likes for our owners to be able to stay in the community as long as they'd like. This requires that Terra Boulevard be removed from the traffic circulation plan as a thoroughfare. I understand the traffic department believes that this, if it were designated as a thoroughfare, that we would have better opportunity for funding for bicycle mobility or sidewalk improvements. But truthfully, we have enormous amount of biking mobility, because we're in sort of an intact community. We're south of State Road 70 on the north. We're west of I-75, which is on our east side. We're bounded on the south by Braden River Road, I'm sorry, by the Braden River, and we're bounded on the west by Braden River Road. We are absolutely the perfect place for weekend bicyclers on their way to Linger Lodge to have lunch and sit music. We do not need to be a thoroughfare. We do not want to be a thoroughfare. We did not appear today in our 100 red shirts, because we thought our request was so simple and so effective that one of us coming to speak was adequate. We urge you, please, to look at the 2045 plan for Terra Boulevard, which includes less right-of-way, less lanes, and take this particular road, require the traffic department and public services to take Terra Boulevard off as a thoroughfare. It serves no purpose. The reason for not building the bridge was because it was fiscally imprudent, and leaving Terra Boulevard as a thoroughfare with our twisty lanes and our retention ponds right up against our road, a variety of reasons, and only being one half a block off of Terra Elementary School. Children coming and going all the time. There is no reason, no rhyme or reason why Terra Boulevard should ever be, should not, is not now, should ever become a thoroughfare. We thank you very much, and we hope you'll give this very serious consideration before it's sent on to the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. Do we have any other callers? Okay.
Caller ending in 305, please press star six to unmute.
And if you could, then state your name also.
Hello, my name is Sarah Kenny. I'm a, hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Kenny. I'm a resident of, of East Bradenton. We're very close to the Manatee River Road and Fort Hamer. And I have been seeing an increase in traffic lately with, with all the development plans coming. And I, I just have more of a question. Is there a master plan for all the developments that's going in? Just listening to the other callers, I'm just curious, when these neighborhoods are being put in, is there anyone looking at how these roads are all connecting, how people are are going to be using the roads, and anything they're going to do to mitigate traffic? And I liked what the other person was asking about, when he was on the call earlier, saying that we need to think about other means of transportation, other than just vehicles. So are there going to be more bike lanes? Are we going to look at other ways of getting around to try to decrease traffic? That's just my main concern right now, is traffic and the hypergrowth we're seeing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other callers? Okay, that's all the callers we have, and again, I'll open it up one more time for anybody else who wishes to come forward. Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing portion, I'm sorry, the public comment portion of the hearing. And for the folks who can't get up during the hearing, I'm going to go ahead and call a recess so we can take a little bit of a break, and we'll come back and we'll discuss a lot of the comments that were stated. So it's about 10:47 now, so we'll take a 10-minute recess. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and continue the meeting. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. If you could, if you could find your seats. All right. So we've had the public comment. We had the presentation, public comment. I know I was making notes. I'm sure Mr. Galeano was making notes related to the comments as folks came up. If you could, if you could please hold your comments. Can you, please, please hold your comments. Let's go ahead and call the meeting back to order. So, Mr. Galeano, if you could, come forward. We're not gonna ask you to stand against the wall or anything like that. We just have some questions. So, Mr. Galeano, during the citizen comments, there seemed to be a lot of things, as is in many cases, some of the desires conflict. And I think maybe some additional information might provide some clarity with regard to how this document is gonna be used. So, one of the things I'd like to address very early in the discussion, there were a couple references to projects, like references to projects related to Mall Holland Road. Are you aware of any county projects associated with improvements along Mall Holland? Or anything that's programmed?
No. I don't remember. I don't believe right now we have something scheduled on the CIP regarding Mulholland. There are a lot of projects around the facility in the vicinity of Ray Road. And by sure they should intervene somehow, the connectivity with Mulholland.
Let me amend my question. Is there anything related to crossing the river?
The idea is to move forward and connect it and expand the Mulholland to the east. Yes, sir.
Is that in the CIP?
I don't recall, I don't recall exactly. I don't believe that this is on the CIP. It means right now with this amount of roadways and no, I don't have it. It's all right.
So, again, understanding the process, this is a look out to 2045. The capital improvement plan looks out five years?
Yes, sir.
And that, that five years is where the funding for projects comes from?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay. And a project may consist of something such as a study that maybe happens in one five-year period and then is there, it could be broke up in pieces. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, sir. It means first, this is the feasibility of the roadway and it should be done by some type of PDNI, Planning Development and Engineering Study. It requires several disciplines and it established essentially design and cost of the project is feasible. This project, one study of this magnitude can be longer than two, three years depending on the complexity. And then comes the land acquisition that it could be also very complicated, very detailed. This project has environmental issue that needs to be scrutinized in detail, I believe. It means this is not a simple, easy one.
And again, I'm trying to emphasize the point. Just because a roadway shows up in the thoroughfare plan doesn't mean it's on a capital improvement plan for any time soon. It could be, but it, the, the idea that is, again, that this is a planning document.
Yes, correct. It means, again, what you see on the plan is, this is the result of the transportation planning activities based on development review. Each road has a purpose and the purpose is guided by connectivity and accessibility. Congestion is created by lack of connectivity. Whenever anyone drives at the same time on the same road, on the same direction in cars alone, we have the problem. And this is one of the areas with less connectivity and less accessibility in the county. And that is the reason Mulholland is, Mulholland is, the extension is, alleviates the traffic congestion in the future. Right now, we don't see any, any problem because we don't have development. But when the development comes, it comes, of course, with a traffic of, the growth of traffic and more cars and therefore longer trips because this is essentially residential. And if the neighborhoods, the inhabitants, the residents of these areas wanna get some grocery, they need to drive. And the drive is longer and that's the reason they need access and connections in order to get destinations.
Okay. There were a lot of comments associated with a segment of Mall Holland that was, I guess, just west of Twin Rivers. There's a portion of Mall Holland within that community. The fact that the developer has that roadway segment within their project and that it's on the thoroughfare plan, does that obligate the developer to construct that roadway?
If the impact, if the project has impacts on this roadway, the impact should be mitigated and it should be addressed by the traffic study. I don't have right now in my head the traffic study, but any, any impact detected at any traffic study should be mitigated.
Right. And, and I wouldn't expect you to have that information. What, what I'm trying to get to is that the thoroughfare plan is a planning document and that the, the issues with the segment of roadway within Mall Holland, I'm sorry, within Twin Rivers, the Mall Holland roadway segment, the more appropriate discussions would be related to whatever the construction plans or site development plans, final site plans associated with that project. There's obligations and requirements through that process. Is that?
Yes, that's, that is, yes, that is correct. But that is not only, it should consider also some type of, for example, speed management strategies in order to, to connect form and function. And that is, that is what sometimes our regulation lacks. How, how is the function because form impacts function?
You say our regulations lack?
It means we can, we don't have teeth to say you need to do X or Y in order to, to get, to get, how can I say, for example, to manage my speed. Only if we have some safety concerns, if we demonstrate that there are safety concerns. Right now, we don't have it. It means we, we need more data in order to, to work in terms of improving safety conditions. Right now, with 500 trips a day, we don't believe that 500 trips a day will be a reason of safety concerns. That is, that is one of the reasons we don't see any speed management strategies or something like that. It means, yes, we need to, to jump from proactive, from reactive to proactive, yes. But it, it doesn't go essentially with planning. It goes also with operation and one confetti the other.
And, and again, the, the point I was trying to make is that there's concerns or, or issues related to a roadway that's a segment within a development, maybe the discussion related to the, the, not mobility, thoroughfare plan isn't the right place to investigate. It would be
Correct.
The documents that authorize the construction of that roadway segment.
Correct. It means this is, our update is at, at the county level. Some, this type of specificities go away of, of our analysis essentially because imagining all roadways at this type of detail, we never finish the duty.
Okay. All right. And the, the last one I have is just kind of a question. I think there's a perception that if you're, if you're calling a road a collector road, like the, the caller related to Tara, Tara just terminates, but the, the, you know, with the removal of the bridge, that doesn't change the function of the road, does it?
No, it doesn't change the function, of course not. It continues being a collector.
So collector is defined, maybe in the very simple terms, how would you define a collector road if somebody were, were, if you were trying to explain it to somebody who wasn't technical?
This is, this is a roadway that allows to go from your home to very, a main facility where you can travel longer and at higher speed. That is a collector.
So the Tara's
This is the transition between local and arterial.
Tara's classification is related to the roads that go to Tara, which are
Local streets.
Local roads to the collector and then it connects to State Road 70, which is a
Exactly. It means Tara, I don't wanna use the word collects because, but Tara groups, groups the trips of the local streets and put the trips on State Road 70. That's the function. And this will be a collector. You can name it wherever you want, but you know, its function is collector.
So multiple neighborhoods connect
Exactly.
To a collector?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Multiple neighborhoods with local roads. Okay. All right. I just wanted to get a couple clarifications. I, you know, as an engineer, I deal with this a lot and I know sometimes the terminology gets a little convoluted when, when you're coming into it cold and you don't have a lot of experience. So I appreciate the explanation. Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Galeano?
I had one.
Go ahead. Mr. Rutledge?
Yeah, Mr. Galeano. So, the presentation of the report as it has been submitted is a guideline for the future. I hear the presentation by the resident from Tara and I, I agree with her 100% because I, I use that area. I go by jig landing down there and I snake around there because I'm not far from there from my home. And I don't see it as a successful model for completion. And so my question is this, with your current designation of it, does it make it irreversible if it ultimately is determined better solutions are there, that just adding more roads and thicker, wider roads is not the solution? I know we have to have a roadmap, but is this a difficult thing to make a different decision on if they ever get funding, if they ever design it, if they ever have a concern about it?
If, you can name the roadway the way you want. I, I, I need to start the statement in that way. It means Tara Boulevard will be collector, you name it local or, or, but the function is collector. You can improve the mobility options along Tara Boulevard, including another mode of transportation. The fact that it has jumping possibilities at the end of the roadway or at the beginning, depending on where you are located, it doesn't change the name, it doesn't change the function.
Right. And I would, I would like to add, maybe the, by a little bit of, at least the way I understand it, I've made a lot of emphasis, the fact that this is a planning document, a planning document, and that's true with the roads that aren't yet constructed. But if a roadway is constructed and it has the right-of-way that's designated per the plan or per the study, I don't know what Tara is, but just say 120 feet. I think that's what, what it is. If it's a four-lane road and it picks up local, local roads and takes them to an arterial, just by the function of that road, it's a collector road, correct?
Yes.
And in that instance, it was a result of planning previously, not necessarily, it was previous documents. And does, does the fact that it's classified as a collector indicate that there's a future connection if that segment was removed from the plan?
It continue operating as a collector.
Right.
And that's it. You can remove it, but it lost, it, it, if you remove it, what happens is you lose opportunities for, for positive interventions in terms of, excuse me, in terms of, of multimodal holistic approach. It means right now the roadway is a auto-centric roadway. If you wanna include them into a perfect transportation mode, you need to adequate the facility in these regards. But if this is a local road, how? Because the funding opportunities disappear essentially because of the designation of the road.
Right.
It means the recommendation is stay as a collector for funding purposes and that's it.
Right. So in this instance, the form of the road is the designation. It's not like if you say, okay, it's not a collector, it's a local road, we're gonna take right-of-way away from it, we're gonna, you know, go to two lanes instead of four. That's not, that's not a reasonable presumption.
No, sir.
Just to, just to redesign it.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I think what I, what I sense here is there are two very strong groups representing their understanding of the traffic flow, the needs and so forth of the community. And I can tell you this, and, and I don't feel this way, I've lived in a number of communities, but I feel like Manatee County Commission and the staff really does listens to its residents. We're small enough still, we're not a metroplex that just does whatever they want. The commissioners, I think, are responsive. And I would just, I would really, really recommend and emphasize and tell you the success that I had in my neighborhood, not because of me, but that, that they changed the development from Neil Homes into a park down the street, 32 acres, and it's fantastic. And I, I think you should be empowered and you should be brazen in making these representations at a sophisticated level, like the first one that was presented up about the Ry Road area and also about Tara, because I think this information is valued and I think it can be assimilated and I think you need to work towards the goal that you have. We have to have grit and fight our way into getting the things that we want because they're beneficial. So this is great information. I think this is the value that we provide as a board. And I think, I think having a plan is important, but I also think the input of these unique conditions and situations have to be exercised to the greatest extent and have to be presented in a way that, like they have today, that are very compelling. Because I don't think we do this arbitrarily and I don't think the commission acts that way. And there's a lot of demands for money and design and effort and it doesn't necessarily have to be in your neighborhood unless you want it. So I just would say that the presentations by, by the public today have been very impressive and I think persuasive.
And Mr. Rutledge, I agree that the, very, a very good example of the commission listening to the residents and citizens is the fact that the Tara Bridge hasn't occurred and it's, it's been removed from the thoroughfare plan. But I, the emphasis I would like to make though is that the, the battles need to be proper battles. Again, I think in many cases, there's conflicting desires, so those have to be negotiated. But there's also that this, this document's not gonna be the solution, changing this document's not necessarily gonna be the solution to every issue related to traffic. So I, I think, again, discussion, information, I'm sure a lot of the residents who are in this area have probably learned some things coming here today and listening to the discussion. So I, I strongly encourage dialogue and discussion related to items like this, but I, I think the, a well-educated approach is, is warranted for many of these issues or concerns. So, anything further? Mr. Galeano, did you have any other clarifications or things to address with regard to the, the citizen comments?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. All right. Very good. Thank you. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion deliberation. I've talked a lot during this application, so, you know, that seems to be a, a problem I have sometimes. Again, being a technical person, I, I've had the pleasure of using the thoroughfare maps and they're not always as friendly as one would hope, so. So anything further?
Yeah, Mr. I would like to make comment. I'm, I'm really impressed with the lady got this, her detail of explanation and presentation was awesome. So thank you very much for coming up and all the citizens today. I understand where you're coming from, but as presented, this is just a plan. As Mr. Galeano stated, we're $9 billion short of putting any plan into effect that would do something. I do feel some of your pain. I live in Palm Air and travel Woodfield and on array every day, so I understand the concerns that the citizens have with regards to bringing that thoroughfare through. But I'm gonna, you know, we, we have to have a plan moving forward. We have to have a plan for traffic. We have to have a plan, just a plan out there. I would encourage the public, again, to, same presentation of the B O C C when this comes before them and let your, let your feelings known to them. But being that we need a plan for, we just need a plan and this is just a plan and not written in stone, as Mr. Galeano said, it's gonna change, it's gonna grow, it's gonna shrink, it can be added to or changed. It's kind of a fluid document. I'm gonna be in favor of moving, moving this transmittal forward to the B O C C.
Thank you, Ms. Ronan. And to dovetail to your discussion, we're a volunteer commission that provides recommendations related to two documents. This one is actually one document, the comprehensive plan, that it's appropriate. The, the Board of County Commissioners can make decisions. They can also direct staff to do different things. So I think it's important that your voice be heard at the next meeting, so make sure that you do participate and continue to have discussions, so. All right, with that, Chair, I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recommend transmittal of the Plan Amendment PA 2104, ordinance 2119, or 29.
Very good. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Mr. Ron, second. Again, any discussion or deliberation? All right, hearing none, Chair's gonna call the matter to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. All right. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Thank you. All right. We're gonna go on to the next item, which is item number five. Is that right?
Yes. Land Development Code, LDCT 2101, ordinance 2119, County Initiative Land Development Code Text Amendment, Impact Fee, and it's a legislative case. And Ms. Nicole Knapp, Impact Fee Administrator, is here to present.
Very good. Thank you. Again, this is a legislative item, so it doesn't require ex parte disclosures. Ms. Knapp, could you go ahead and make your presentation?
Good morning, Commissioners. If I could get the slide presentation, thank you. So, good morning. As Rosina said, I'm Nicole Knapp, Impact Fee Administrator, and today we're here to seek an amendment to the Land Development Code text amendment, text only, as, with respects to the implementation of our impact fees. So we're asking to amend the Land Development Code and in your packet you'll have Exhibits A and B. And as you'll see on the screen, if I could kind of categorize the strike through and underline, the changes are nonsubstantial to our administrative procedures or to have language that's consistent with new legislation or consistency throughout the Land Development Code. And the role of the Planning Commission today is to hopefully find the amendments consistent with the comprehensive plan, as I explained in Exhibits A and B. What the request does not include, it does not include implementation or of any impact fee update study or a new fee schedule. Neither of those are part of this amendment. As you may recall, in March, we presented an impact fee update study to you all. And at the conclusion of that, you had a favorable recommendation to move the process forward to the Board of County Commissioners. Between those two hearings, the administration and staff had a discussion that, given some changes in circumstances with some recent changes in House Bill 337 and changes in our population and CIP, along with the fact that we had a desire to have the study make some recommendations regarding affordable housing and other similar, what could be similar small type dwelling units, like your tiny homes or ADUs. And the study at that time did not because the, there just wasn't enough data. So we're working with our consultant to do a partial amendment to this study that you had previously seen, and that can take about six to eight months. So in the meantime, there were some administrative changes we felt necessary, consistency with the statute, and you'll see one of those amendments is necessary. It gives the Board of County Commissioners the option to waive or reduce impact fees for affordable housing and we feel like that it's important to get that language in the in the Land Development Code. So the first attachment you have in front of you is Exhibit A. That's our definitions. The definitions related to impact fees are mentioned twice in Chapter Two. It can be a little bit confusing. First, the referenced alphabetical order by reference only. There's no definition tied to it. And then there's an impact fee section within Chapter Two that defines all of those definitions. So you'll see a couple stricken or new mentions added. And then if you turn to the definition section of impact fees, that's where you'll see most of the definitions have to do with consistency with Florida statute or consistency with other definitions within the Land Development Code and also helping us to implement analysis we've had to do over the last five years on uses that just weren't identified or, or defined. There we go. And then the other exhibit is Exhibit B and that's where you'll get into, that's Chapter 11, that's the impact fee ordinance. And in there, we, again, if I summarized, it's, it's, all the changes presented in front of you are to update our business processes that have changed in the last five years, address the affordable housing, consistency with Florida statute, and then consistency within the Land Development Code. And this is, I, I didn't put all the definitions on the screen. I can if you have a definition question, but I, I decided to just focus on Exhibit B today. This here is Section 1102. It has to do with impact fee determination. And this is an example of a, of an advancing our business or administrative process. Not all development requires a building permit or certificate of occupancy and some of those triggers are when the fees are to be paid. So you can see we've added or certificate of completion, as the case may be, just for consistency, just to make it clear for the public, whether it be developer or residents trying to develop their property, on when the timing of fees are to be paid. Again, more of a housekeeping, nonsubstantial change. Same with this one. This is our exemption, Section 1102-2. We just felt we needed to add, again, to advance the implementation process on our in-house side, make it clear that, that some of the burden of proof is on the applicant of when to provide appropriate documents when they're trying to apply or prove that there was a previous structure that was demoed, for example, and they would like to apply some sort of adjustment or exemption to their new structure. This is the affordable housing element I was telling you about, the Section 1108-6. The black text, as you see it, is what's there today. Previous to 70, House Bill 7103, excuse me, from July of 2019, we couldn't waive fees or reduce fees for just arbitrary land uses. It had to be consistent across the board. So there was a time where we put the black language into the code to allow us to, you couldn't waive without offsetting your loss revenues. That's the black text as you see it today. Currently today, if an affordable housing project comes in, we have livable manatee, which we can offset the revenue loss. With the new House Bill from 2019, it gives the local governments the option. It's not mandated, but an option to waive or reduce, and it's a policy decision. So this red language that you see would be added to 1108-6 and it gives the Board the process by which they would do that if they were inclined to waive or reduce. It gives a process of it that it has to be approved by resolution. It's not an administrative function, so it would have to come to the Board. And it's restriction or limited, it must be tied to a land use restriction agreement. This is an internal consistency change to the code as well. The blue language is what's in the code, the blue stricken language is what's in the code today and it's, it's very antiquated. So the red, as you see it, is consistent with other notice policies that we have within the Land Development Code for other appeal processes. So again, just consistency throughout. And then last here is credits for system improvement. And then last here is credits for system improvements, and this has to do with being consistent with Florida statute. The first is with credits being assigned or transferred to adjacent benefit districts, formerly you couldn't necessarily do that, and the second is with, if there was to be an increase in, in impact fee rates, it ensures that the holder receives a full benefit for their credit. So, again, we're adding these to be consistent with Florida statute. In closing, staff feels the text amendment proposed in Exhibits A and B are nonsubstantial for consistency purposes, procedural or housekeeping in nature, and that the proposed text amendments is consistent with the comprehensive plan. They also support the implementation of procedures officially adopted in our impact fee administrative manual, which, once or if these amendments are approved, we would update our manual to be synced with that. So, we ask that you find the request to be consistent with the comp plan and recommend approval of ordinance 2119 as shown in Exhibits A and B. This concludes my report.
Very good, thank you. Question regarding affordable housing?
Do you want me to go back to that slide?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just a real, real, real quick, two questions. The resolution, is it per?
Per development.
Per development, it can't be a resolution all?
Blanket? No.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the, I think you said it was subject to a restriction or a condition?
Yeah, and that, that kind of further explains the answer. So, it'll be per development that meets the criteria for affordable housing, and that specific development will need a land use restriction agreement. That's why you wouldn't just arbitrarily say any and all. We want to make sure it's specific to meet the criteria for affordable housing definition and the lure restrictions.
And the land use restriction agreement is simply a designation that the, the units or the homes would be affordable?
A certain percent, or, yeah.
In perpetuity?
Correct. I, I don't work with them directly, so I can't say exactly what's in the entire agreement, but.
Okay. And dovetail on that question, is it also, is it, have to be designated as affordable by Denise Thomas's group? I don't remember the designation, the affordable housing folks.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Clegg, I'm the county attorney.
Good morning.
We work with these very, very often, and a lure or land use restriction agreement is a contract that is recorded in the official records, like a deed restriction, like a deck that you see on a subdivision, so that it runs with the land. The terms vary depending upon the period of affordability, the type of housing, the location of the housing, and those are typically negotiated through the R E O department and brought to the Board for approval.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Knapp? Very good, all right, thank you. All right, I don't have any speaker cards, but I'm gonna open this up to anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this application. Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, do we have any callers? No callers? All right, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comment portion of the hearing, and ask if there's any additional questions, clarification needed. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing on this item. Discussion, or the Chair will consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. I'm made to recommend adoption of Manti County Ordinance 2119, amending the Manti County Land Development Code as amended, as recommended by staff.
Very good, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smock, any discussion? All right, Chair's gonna call the matter to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Rutledge, did you vote in the affirmative?
Yes, sir, I did.
Very good, thank you. Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Thank you. All right, next item, item number six, and just for the interest of planning, we're gonna try to get through the, the next two items around 12:30. If it looks like we're not gonna hit the 12:30, I'm gonna call for lunch, so is that okay with the Commissioners?
Let's, okay.
I do have to leave by 12:45.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's do this. All right, next item is item number six. Again, it's a quasi judicial, which means we're back to being sworn in. So, Ms. Leiter, can you please read item number six into the record?
Item number six, C 2102, Arctic Palm Company Owner, P L N 2102-0088, is a rezon of more or less three acres in the north side of State Road 64 is. Approximately 1,300 feet east of Lorain Road, Brandonton, Manatee County, from a general agriculture to general commercial zoning district. It's a quasi judicial case, the case manager is Ms., Mr. Kevin Oatman, and he represented the applicant, is Mr. Smich.
Very good.
Thank you, Rosina, for the name. Again, my name is Bob Schmidt with Land Planning Associates, and I have been sworn.
Mr. Schmidt, can you, any ex parte communications regarding this application?
Yes, sir.
No, no.
Very good, thank you, sorry about that.
Okay, this is a rezon request for Arctic Palm Nursery. This is located on State Road 64, about 1,300 feet east of Lorain Road. I'll start by showing you the aerial from the staff report, and you can see Lorain here to the west, and there's the site. It's three acres in size, which is nonconforming for its current zoning. The current zoning is agricultural, and you're supposed to have five. The staff report identifies that as being legal nonconforming. So, it's not as though we are taking away the use, but the change in the zoning would allow the, it would make it conforming to the G C zoning district. This is what the site looks like today in the blow up of the aerial. It is a nursery, it's an active nursery by Mike Armstrong Landscaping, and he has a lease on the property with the owner, Gary Taylor, who is also in the nursery business, and there is no imminent plan to change the use of the property. As I said, it is, I believe it's an active lease, and the purpose of Mr. Taylor's rezon really is to set him, him and his family up for the future, knowing that it, it meets commercial locational criteria and qualifies for commercial zoning, would certainly maximize the, the future use of the land. Again, it is located on State Road 64, which is a thoroughfare in the urban surface, service area. The staff report identifies, they, and we did discuss this prior to the application being submitted, they felt a little bit more comfortable with N C here, neighborhood commercial as opposed to G C. And I wanted to talk about that, because what you see on the zoning map there are a couple of rezones that were recently done, both to G C, and there's a seven acre gap in between the G C to the west and my client's property here. The uses are similar in G C and N C, but there has been some expression of, I think there's a future pre-application in this area for a comp plan amendment to do some multifamily. G C would allow multifamily, not that there's any plan to do so, but if somebody were to combine those pieces in the north, then they can ask for that. N C would not allow that. So, in discussing that with my client, he said, I, I'd prefer G C to be out there in the future with seven acres of future G C to the west of me will hinder my development for, and limit it to neighborhood commercial only, and he, he didn't want to do that. So, that's, that's the discussion there. I did read the staff report, and I concur with its findings, with the exception of the N C zoning item that I just mentioned. And with that, I'll close, we, I'd like to get your approval for recommendation of approval to take, to take to the Board. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant?
Okay, sir.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Leiter.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll go to Mr. Oatman's presentation.
Good morning, my name is Kevin Oatman, and I've been sworn in. I'm with Building and Development Services. Project Z 21-02 is the Arctic Palm Company rezon. The subject property is located north side of State Road 64 East, about 1,300 square, excuse me, 1,300 feet east of Lorain Road, as Mr. Schmidt had said to you before. The request is to rezon a three acre parcel from general agricultural to general commercial G C. The property is located between two general agricultural zone properties. Staff did, as Mr. Schmidt had said, staff explained to them and recommended that the neighborhood commercial medium zoning district could be more appropriate for the subject's site because of the higher intensity uses allowed in G C could be a concern for those impacted door to the north of the residential community. Per the L C D, per the Land Development Code, L D C, the three acre parcel should be five acres or to be buildable, but at the present time, it is considered legally and nonconforming The applicant has requested, excuse me, I'm sorry, the site is one parcel approximately three acres. To the north of it is the residential zoning, planned development residential zoning. To the south is general, general agricultural A with planned development P D C and G C commercial. To the east of the property is general A commercial zoning, while to the west, as Mr. Schmidt had said, that there's general A commercial, as well as general commercial medium and planned development commercial and G C. The future land use for this parcel is urban fringe three. Surrounding it and the area around it is also within that same future land use category. The maximum gross residential density is three dwellings per acre, with nine dwellings per acre, acre because of it being in the activity notes. The maximum floor ratio at this time would be point five, which gives the maximum building square footage of 65,340, because it is within the commercial activity note. In comparison from what we had recommended for the N C neighborhood commercial medium versus the general commercial, in N C neighborhood commercial, it's only limited to 30,000 square feet, and if it is multifamily or commercial, the maximum height would be three stories. Whereas with general commercial, that would allow up to 65,340 square feet in the U F three, future land use, because again, it's at the activity node. If it's multifamily or commercial, the height would be able to go to the maximum of four stories, can be to six stories if there was a special permit. In comparison for the land use, there are a couple of items that neighborhood commercial would not allow, where G C would allow, and that would be a car wash, equipment sales, rental, as well as heavy vehicle repair. Now, there are some higher intense uses that would be allowed in both, which is gas pumps, service stations, as well as vehicle repair and warehouse. Those would require a special permit if it is allowed in the N C M zoning, whereas in G C, it would just be administrative. The positive aspects of this is the rezon is a logical expansion of the commercial along State Road 64 East. The site has direct access to a major arterial, and is the area is designated for mixed uses. However, for the negative aspects, because of the, some of the uses within this commercial area, it could have potential for lighting and impact, noise impacts to the residents to the north. The Land Development Code provides standards for specific uses that may have negative extremities, and has requirements for additional landscape and bufferance for certain commercial uses next to the residential uses. They will be administratively viewed at the time of the submittal for the final site plan. This request does appear to be consistent with both the comprehensive plan and the L D C. Thank you, have a good day.
Very good. Mr. Oatman, I have a real quick question. Is there, were there mitigating circumstances related to the parcel to the south and the parcel to the west that received G C zoning designations different than this parcel?
Rosina can speak on the G C to the west.
The parcel that was rezoned to M C M was rezoned with the, with the adoption of the Land Development Code, and G C was approved in 2018, and it's a rezon, with rezon, we cannot post any stipulations, you know?
My, my question is more, was there consideration, like, for example, it's in close proximity to Lorain Road, or closer proximity, so therefore?
Yes, this was a more established note, you know, close to the intersection. In this case, part of the complaints that, or concerns that we has is, first, the side of the, the side, no, the configuration of the side that is a long side.
Right, right.
And in order to develop a project, you know, with maybe four stories, gonna be some constraints that could affect the view from the adjacent neighbors. We are recommended more that M C M, because we were thinking that we're more suitable for mitigate any potential impacts, but both the M C A and the G C are in the range of potential uses and are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and open this up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come speak on this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing, and just open it up for discussion. My thoughts are, you know, relative to the discussion we had previously about planning, this is on an arterial road, so I understand the concern related to the, the neighboring, the neighborhood to the north. I, I think N C would be more appropriate if it were within the community. The fact that it's along an arterial, I, I think is counter, or counters the argument or the concern, ways against the concern. So, it seems appropriate. I, I understand the concern, I wouldn't want a four story building next to my home, but this also, generally speaking, I think the intent or the desire is to push the businesses close to the roadway and utilize the rear for, say, stormwater or something like that. And again, there is the possibility of aggregation of other parcels, so that's, that's just my thought. I know, I, I understand and respect staff's opinion, I just think the, it would be a disservice on this parcel to try to mitigate concerns that have not yet been, been brought forward, but, I mean, it could very well be, but I think it's, you know, we just have to weigh the benefits versus the impacts.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. DeLezline.
I'm made to recommend adoption of Manti County zoning ordinance Z 2102.
All right, before we do that, let's have some rebuttal, if.
I thought we were down to that point.
Before, before we rebut.
Anxious.
Staff closing comments? All right.
Oh, I already expressed that is more for compatibility to the adjacent neighbors.
Right, thank you, and I, the hard part is the compatibility of State Road 64 right there, that's, I'm sure that's noisy, so. So, Mr. Schmidt, rebuttal?
I just want, yeah, I really don't have a rebuttal, just your point of the value of the property is towards the front, and we, we presume that whoever comes along and develops it will put the stormwater in the rear, and it's, it's visibility that's so important, on a thoroughfare road.
Very good, thank you. All right, Mr. DeLezline?
I recommend adoption of Manti County zoning ordinance Z 2102.
Very good, we have a, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ron, second, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna call the matter to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. So, all right, we're up to item number seven. Again, this is a quasi judicial item, so you must be sworn to provide testimony or make comment. So, Ms. Slider, can you read item P D M U 2032, paren Z, paren G into the record?
Yes. Item number seven, P D M U 2032, C G, Jones Farms, Jones Potato Farm Farms, I N C owner, Forest City Property Company LLC, contra purchases. It's a quasi judicial case, a rezon of more or less 635 acres from A M C O, general agriculture north central overlay district, to the P D M U N C O, planned development mixed use, zoning district retaining the north central overlay district. The site is generally located north of Bukai Road and west of Pritchard Road Parish, Manatee County, approving a general development plan, large project application for 1,833 residential units. Single family detached, single family semi-detached, single family attached, and multifamily, and 300,000 square feet. single family attached, and multifamily, and three hundred thousand square feet of commercial space. This is a quasi judicial, the case manager is Mr. Marshall Robinson, and he represented the applicant, is Mr. Alan Jones, Mr. Caleb Grimes, and Ms. Rachel Layton.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I need to swear some more people.
Okay. All right. If you intend to speak on this application, this is the last application we have, so if you intend to speak, please rise to be sworn in.
If you haven't already.
Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and factual representations which you're about to present to the planning commission will be truthful and accurate?
I do.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, any ex parte communications regarding this application? No.
No, sir.
Mr. Rutledge?
No, sir.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. If you would, Mr. Jones, please introduce your application.
Great. Well, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today. My name's Alan Jones. I'm the owner of Jones Potato Farm. We've operated this property as a farm for the last twenty years as a commercial farm. This parcel is in the urban service boundary, and properties to the east, west, and south have all been approved for planned developments. Our general development proposal follows the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and will be used to plan the Fort Hamer extension, which is on the county thoroughfare plan. I have put together the best people, planners and developers I can to bring a presentation that I hope you'll enjoy today, so thank you for your time and we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
I am Caleb Grimes with the law firm of Grimes Galvano, and I have been sworn earlier this morning. You know, I, I really am pleased to be here on behalf of Alan Jones and his development team for this site that you'll hear from in just a moment. What I want to do is introduce to you who we all have here today and who we'll hear from on this project, which is, as Alan indicated, is a project consistent with what we have going on in North County. The timing is appropriate and one that I think you will appreciate. With us today, first we have Mr. Pat Neal, who really needs no introduction, I think everyone knows him, and John Neal, both of whom you will hear from later. They are leading the development of, of this project. Our engineer, engineering and planning company is Z N S Engineering, and with us today, we have Mr. Jeb Mulock, our engineer for the project, who has done a lot of engineering in this area, and Rachel Layton, planner with Z N S, and you will hear from Rachel right after me, and she'll tell you a lot more about this project. We also have environmental, covered by Joel Christian with Ardua, and our transportation traffic, we have Mr. Jay Calhoun of Vibe. What you have here today is a request for a rezone from agriculture to planned development mixed use, and it is one that has gone through large project review because of its size and nature, and as you know, large project, project review means an extensive review of all aspects by your county and with a lot of information provided to the county so that it can properly be reviewed. And so with that, I want to turn it over to Ms. Rachel Layton, who will tell you more about the project. Rachel?
My name is Rachel Layton. I am a certified planner, just having celebrated my twentieth year in the A I C P. I have been with Z N S Engineering now for about eight years, but I've been working in this community since nineteen ninety-eight, and am pleased to be a part of the continuing growth in our county with these projects. We worked on I A Manatee to the south, and I have been sworn, sorry, I was sworn twice this morning, just to make sure everybody saw me that second time. With the location of this project just to the south of Hillsborough County and abutting the Hillsborough County line, I wanted to go ahead and advertise to those folks that were in Hillsborough County, the property owners that are five hundred feet to the north of us, so you'll hear from some of them today. The property is located on one hundred, sorry, six hundred and thirty-five acres of land on the north side of Buckeye Road, south of the Hillsborough County line, and approximately one mile west of U S three oh one and Parish. Fort Hamer Road extension will bisect the property, as will the alignment of J J Road. The property is actively used for agricultural purposes today. There are sixty-nine point ninety-eight acres of wetlands on the property. We propose to preserve all of them. The parcel is suitable for development. The general development plan proposes one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three residential lots for a maximum gross density of three units per acre, and this is, we took out the twenty-four acres of commercial to, to utilize this calculation. We are proposing a maximum of three hundred thousand square feet of commercial development, and that's a floor area ratio of point two nine, and these items are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Fort Hamer Road will be extended north from Buckeye Road as part of this project. There will be multiple access points along Buckeye Road and Fort Hamer Road and J J Road. We wanted to have as much connectivity through this project as possible. Project design proposes three commercial parcels at the activity nodes, two at Buckeye Road and Fort Hamer Road, and one at the southwest corner of Fort Hamer Road and J J Road. The project design also includes a potential park site with fifteen acres that you can see at the southeast corner of J J Road and Fort Hamer Road, and then a school site adjacent to that for twenty acres, and we've been in communication with both the Parks and Recreation Department and the School Board for these properties. The general development plan design includes open space consistent with land development regulations. At this level, we're providing thirty-two percent open space where twenty-five percent is required. Twenty percent open space will be required for the commercial parcels. Project includes thirty-foot thoroughfare buffers along Buckeye Road, Fort Hamer Road, and J J Road for the residential parcels, and twenty-five-foot thoroughfare buffers for the commercial parcels. We are providing twenty-foot buffers along the north, east, and west boundaries of the project. Project design does include future right-of-way setback along Buckeye Road. Fort Hamer Road extension and J J Road extension are on the thoroughfare maps that you were presented earlier this morning, and are included in the general development plan for right-of-way reservation. With this project, we did a traffic impact statement instead of seeking concurrency, so that way, as the project develops, the staff will have an opportunity to review in detail the traffic operations and the traffic studies consistent with this plan. Our amenity centers will be sized and phased in conjunction with each residential phase of development to meet the recreational needs of the residents. The amenity centers may include clubhouses, pools, and other outdoor facilities. We are proposing residential detached, semi-detached, attached, and multifamily, and with that, multifamily and non-residential buildings will be limited to height in three stories. Single-family detached, semi-detached, and attached will be limited in height to two stories. The design of the project is consistent with Land Development Code regulations, compatible with projects in the area, and compliant with the comprehensive plan. The area along Buckeye Road and Moccasen Wallow Road moving from west along U S three oh one, sorry, along Buckeye Road and Moccasen Wallow to three oh one is transitioning from agricultural uses to planned development. We have the villages of Amazon South along Moccasen Wallow. We have Havel Farms to, to the north of them, and this creates North River Ranch. We have I A Manatee to the north of that project. So we have this, this large area of several thousand acres of planned development mixed use immediately to our south, and as Mr. Jones mentioned, there are approvals for the projects that are along either side of this, this property. Nearby approvals along I seventy-five also include Sawgrass Gateway, Buckhead Trails, and Eagle Point. The property is within the U F three future land use category, which allows residential and support uses with a maximum gross density of three dwelling units per acre, a maximum floor area of point three five, which increases to point five at activity nodes. The comprehensive plan limits the non-residential development to three hundred thousand square feet in U F three, and you can see really this area of the county is U F three, and we are west of the future development area boundary. The property is currently zoned general agricultural in the North Central Overlay District. The proposed zoning will amend the map to planned development mixed use. P D R and P D M U zoning have been approved in this area, and residential developments are, in the North River Ranch are now selling. These approvals are changing the character of the area from agricultural to residential development pattern, consistent with the comprehensive plan. Planned Development Mixed Use District is intended for the establishment of complementary groupings of residential and commercial uses. We have several specific approval requests with this application. Four of them are in the North Central Overlay District that you see on a regular basis for the buffers to be reduced, both for residential uses on thoroughfares, commercial thoroughfares, and the pool cages adjacent to buffers, as well as asking for a retail building over seventy-five thousand square feet, and these have been granted numerous times. I'd like to point out two of the other specific approvals. One is to allow sidewalks on one side of the street within two miles of public school with design to be reviewed with the school district. They are in support of that one, and staff is not in support of this other one where we proposed a maximum length of cul-de-sacs from eight hundred feet to thirteen hundred feet with a turnaround at six hundred and sixty feet. We did present this graphic as part of the specific approval and offered a stipulation. So where a specific approval is not granted, final site plan will comply with all Land Development Code regulations, including stormwater design, lighting, landscaping, building setbacks, and open space, and our application has received a supportive staff report, and now I'd like to bring up John Neal.
Hello, Commissioners, John Neal, Neal Land and Neighborhoods. I've been sworn in for today's presentation. I think, I think Rachel did a, a great job, so I, I get to talk about the fun stuff. All right, so my team has a good track record of building multimodal and connection. I heard Mr. Rutledge talking about it earlier, so it's fortuitous that I get to talk about it now. Part of our development in North River Ranch to the south has instituted some of these things that you see on the screen now. This includes walking trails, wide paved services for pedestrians, bike trails, roadside bike paths, boardwalks, and even fair weather access to conserved lands. These elements are, as I said, a hallmark of our development, and so it's something we plan to bring forward here to Jones Farm. I make a point to mention this whenever I'm in the company of Commissioners or anybody actually who will listen. I've been talking to the newspaper about it because it's my hope that this part of North County will use these as examples to develop standards whereby we can get people out of cars and into, into other modes of transportation by providing commercial nearby for them to do their shopping and, and whatnot, and also to access schools. That's, that's part of the, excuse me. There we go. So, Neal Land and Neighborhoods is a master planning organization and development organization. We think outside of the subdivision and think about the larger community. So what you see here is a road. We've been talking about roads all morning, and for the last few years, Pat and I have been working on the extension of Fort Hamer Road, which he'll talk about in a little bit more detail in a minute. We've heard citizens ask for years, I'm sure that you've heard citizens ask for years, that new development and, and growth have infrastructure planned and in place for new homes in advance. I want to tell you, it's not easy, but we've heard, and it's something that we've been working on, and here in the Jones Farm property, we'll bring Fort Hamer Road right through the middle. One of the benefits of having this arterial road is that it creates an artery in this area of the county, especially for the connections to schools. I think in the next presentation, instead of just a plain old road, we'll have a bunch of, of schools there, because in the last few years, we've created the Parish Community High School at the south end of North River Ranch, a new elementary school, a future State College of Florida, a middle school just to the south, and here on this property, as you'll see, a new park and a proposed elementary school. We, we like the arterial road, Mr. Connolly, because as you, as you discussed earlier, it keeps, keeps our traffic, keeps new traffic off of the local roads, lets, lets them remain local and collect onto this road, and it'll get people out to the interstate. Again, it's our goal, by providing this forward-looking leadership, that we can encourage other developers and landowners in the area to think ahead for the needs of their future developments and provide roads and facilities necessary to help provide bright, healthy, and safe traffic movement for future residents in this area. In closing for my part of the presentation, I'd like to take just another couple seconds to show the three-point-five mile radius of this area. Red is active development, as Rachel identified in her presentation. Blue is in permitting now, and what you could see is that Jones Farm on the top in blue is the logical continuation of this progress being served by Fort, Fort Hamer, which is also in red. It's a little hard for me to see that, but I think, I think it's enforced. This will, this will be a great project. I'd appreciate your support and support for our, our special requests, and here's Pat Neal to discuss more about Fort Hamer Road.
I'm Pat Neal, one double oh three fifty-ninth Street Northwest, and I have been sworn. My families have built about eighteen thousand homes in Manatee County over the last fifty-one years. We have become much more interested in building high-value housing with good transportation facilities, more parks, more facilities. We've been working hard on schools, and I believe that you will find, much like Lakewood Ranch has blossomed to be more than we ever thought it would be, that North River Ranch and the fifty-eight hundred homes that John is building next door will be an exciting place for Manatee County, as well as the Arbor Park property, which is to the east, which is also partly under our ownership. We think that the future of Manatee County will be to create a more modern, more exciting place for people to live, people who currently live in Bradenton, but in this location, people who live in Pinellas County and Manatee County. Could I have just only five more minutes?
Yes, as long as you're not filibustering.
Yeah, all right. Well, that's a problem with me, Mr. Chairman, so here I go. Of course, the Fort Hamer extension is twenty-six miles long, will be the only unbroken twenty-six mile road through Manatee County. It's very important as a reliever of I seventy-five, which also functions as a local road. We think about fifty-seven percent of the traffic in the mornings on I seventy-five functions as local road, and the reason for the regional support for the Fort Hamer extension and exit two thirty-four is it relieves twelve percent of the total trips on I seventy-five. Here's a picture, if I can do it with the elmo, of exit two thirty-four, which is coming in South Hillsborough County. This, of course, shows a dead-end road. You've actually approved a dead-end road this morning, but of course, it has to go through Hillsborough County as well. Primarily for the education of, of your team in connection with this plan, we want to make sure that you see that Fort Hamer goes somewhere. It goes to two thirty-four and then to U S forty-one just south of Sun City Center, actually, south of Ruskin. I think I'll close by saying, we thought through the region. We think this is a well-planned development. We've heard little opposition. You will hear from four families from Hillsborough County in the Sundance subdivision, and I would like to hear them and then respond to their comments. Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks for the extra three and a half minutes.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Very good. All right. Who do we have for staff? Oh, Mr. Robinson. So you have your running shoes on.
That makes a statement.
Good morning, Marshall Robinson. I'm a staff planner with Development Services, and I have been sworn. Subject property is located east of I seventy-five and west of U S three oh one at the northwest corner of Buckeye Road and Pritchard Road in Parish, and is also west of the urban service boundary. Subject property consists of approximately six hundred and thirty-five acres. The future land use for the property is U F three, where the max density is allowed at three dwelling units per acre gross, and nine dwelling units per acre for affordable housing and/or mixed-use projects at activity nodes. The max F A R allowed in the U F three future land use is point three five and point five at the activity node. Subject property is currently zoned general agriculture and is within the North Central Overlay District. The applicant's request is to rezone the subject property from general agricultural and N C O to P D M U, planned development mixed use and N C O for the approval of a general development plan to allow eighteen hundred and thirty-three development plan to allow 1,833 residential units, consistent of single-family detached, single-family semi-detached, single-family attached, and multifamily. Also is 300,000 square feet of non-residential uses in accordance with the schedule of permitted and prohibited uses proffered by the applicant. The applicant spoke about the specific approval request. Here they are in the presentation. Rachel spoke to the specificity of each of the requests. I will make a note for the increased maximum length for cul-de-sacs. Just want to touch on that before we get to the site plan. You know, normally, when those specific approval requests come in for extensions to the maximum length for cul-de-sacs, we usually get some detailed information on the location of those cul-de-sacs and whether or not there's any implication for environmentally sensitive lands being impacted. Usually, there's something in the justification statement and something detailed on the plan that gives us some context for why the extra length for the cul-de-sac is needed. And Tom Gerstenberger is here and some of the other folks in staff, so we might be able to speak on that if there are any more questions about the specific approval request for the extended length. The proposed GDP is a large project application, and it consists of 635 acres. And the yellow here is the location for the proposed 1,833 residential units on approximately 611 acres. The red is the location of the proposed maximum 300,000 square feet of non-residential uses proffered by the applicant. And there's a future park here in green, shown on a 15-acre site. There's also a 20-acre site for a school or future residential development. And there are 20-foot greenbelt buffers provided throughout the sites, specifically along the west, north, and east boundaries, and internal to the development, providing buffering for residential uses adjacent to non-residential uses. Here we can see the 30-foot roadway buffers for residential uses adjacent to the thoroughfares. And here we can see the 25-foot roadway buffers for commercial projects adjacent to the thoroughfares. It should be noted that the future thoroughfares in Fort Hamer Road and JJ Road, these roadways once constructed, will qualify the intersections as activity nodes, allowing development within activity nodes for a maximum FAR of .5 until 300,000 square feet of non-residential uses is achieved for the overall project. The intersection of Fort Hamer Road and Buckeye Road will also qualify as an activity road once Fort Hamer Road is constructed. The request to increase the maximum cul-de-sac length for the project is not supported by staff. I already told you that, didn't I? And the typical lot layouts are here. These are pretty consistent with the other planned developments that have been approved previously in the area in the vicinity. Nothing new, I think, with these development standards. And the positive aspects and negative aspects and mitigation measures were provided in your staff report, and after a look at those, I'd be happy to answer your questions if you have any. Thank you.
Very good. Just, I think you've probably inferred it, but just a clear statement, the only point of contention is cul-de-sac length?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Any questions for staff? We'll touch on that after. All right. I'm going to go ahead. I've got several speaker cards here, so I'm going to call the cards that I have. And if you would, come forward, state your name, and please let us know your concerns. The first speaker card I have is Ralph Greeley. And if I failed to say it, state your name, and that you have been sworn. Again, this is quasi-judicial. So, Mr. Greeley, if you would, come forward. And after Mr. Greeley, we'll have Mr. Robert Moon.
My name is Ralph Greeley, and I've been a resident, community of Sundance, for 41 years.
And that you have been sworn. I'm sorry.
And have been sworn.
I know it's repeated over and over.
Yes. I'm here this afternoon to discuss PDMU 2023 Jones Farm application. My community recommends denial of the aforementioned planned development. The community of Sundance does think highly of Manatee County and, as such, spends time, dollars patronizing your restaurant, stores, venue. I wonder if that came from the relationship of your ex-administrator, Ed Hunziger, and our ex-administrator, Mike Merrill. They had meetings. They talked out common challenges. I do know that no such recent meetings between counties or between active community and active rezoning application ever took place and could have been, based on your future land use documentation. Commissioners, our community would certainly like to hear from Manatee County on their plans for both mitigation of urban sprawl and immediate plans for resolution for sustainable transportation planning. Your county commissioners already have approved over 12,000 home sites in the last few years in the, I'll call it Parish plush area. What data presented itself that warrants the need for an additional 1,800-plus dwelling units now? Based upon proximity to Hillsborough County, I have more concerns. The section of 301 south of 674 to Moccasen-Wallow is one lane north and one lane south. Two are needed for safety. This 1,800-plus additional home sites will also strain the section of 301 even more than it does now, no doubt costing more lives in fatal accidents. Just a couple of weeks ago, two more citizens died on Route 301. Folks, let's look at one of the applications. Page 14 of 34, PDMU Jones. Item 7, light industrial uses are limited to microbreweries only. Really? Microbreweries typically distribute through a wholesaler, meaning for the collective us, yet more traffic coming out on 301, great news for the traffic people, to increased traffic, and also semi-noxious odors pervading the atmosphere. Commissioners, please vote for denial based on these cogent facts and the kind of staff report evidence and presented made public hearing, finding the request to be inconsistent with the Manatee Complan and the Manatee LDC. Attendees in the audience, if you agree with recommending denial, please stand. Thank you. Commissioners, thank you for all your time this afternoon. Bless you all and safe travels.
Thank you. Mr. Moon, if you would, and after Mr. Moon, Yvonne Griselle.
My name is Bob Moon, and I have been sworn. I have been a resident in the Sundance community for 28 years. I'm here today, or this morning, to again discuss the Jones PLLE 2012-56 application. Our Board of Directors and the community have asked us to recommend denial for this planned development. Commissioners, it is interesting that the ZNS Engineering sent a packet out of information in the mail on August 26 about the aforementioned application. Adjacent property owners, which are our homeowners who are directly affected by the most vulnerable receiving the letter on August 28. We, of course, knew that there was much more detail that we needed to get, so we pursued briskly. Nothing like having nine days to put together a response for something this important. I wanted to see if you knew that page 23, the final Jones staff report PDF, your applicant made no mention of the community of Sundance until today we got here. The title of this page was G-period relationships with adjacent property owners. This, on the surface, was grossly inept. Answer, with less than 500 feet away from the said planned development, you can see via the map for the four roads of the adjacent properties, and these are our roads. That's Circle El Place in Sundance, Long Rifle Drive, the extension of Lightfoot Road, and Bush Cassidy Trail. Commissioners, maybe the development should have used Note 31 for General Development Plan 07.29.21 PDF to install walls to protect the residents from living on these roads mentioned previously. By the way, page 11, endangered species, the applicant said no mention of species were observed during the preliminary wildlife and habitat assessment conducted in the site on October 2020. Basically, I can say, we're rural, and you've got to be kidding me. 200 feet of Tico easement. This is a rural area, and we've seen everything in wildlife in this community except for the Florida black bear. And I repeat everything, and you can add what you want to that. Page 13 speaks of the negative aspects of the plan. There's no current water or wastewater facility bordering the development project. Let me add, currently, there is a pump generator for pumping water, running most of the time, and we can hear it in Sundance. Unfortunately, the potato farm is adjacent to the southernmost properties of Sundance. No noise abatement is needed, as well as security for this plan to go forward. Please vote for denial because of the fact-based scenario, based upon the staff reports, evidence presented, comments made by public hearings, findings of the request to be inconsistent with the Manatee County Complan and LDC. And again, I'll ask if all attendees here that recommend denial, please stand.
We're not going to do that. Yeah, we're not going to do that. Next time somebody stands up, we're going to take a recess, 10-minute recess.
Understand. Very good. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker card I have is Yvonne Griselle, and then after Yvonne Griselle, Louis Barnes.
My name is Yvonne Griselle, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I have been a resident of Manatee County for over 20 years, and I recently moved into the neighborhood of Sundance. I'm asking for you to deny on three accounts. One is the zoning change. You are now asking us to change a rural area into a urban area. The houses here are going to be five feet apart. The roads, we heard earlier, $9 billion to run these roads. You don't even have them. This same developer developed along Moccasen-Wallow Road. Moccasen-Wallow Road is still only two lanes. Where is the infrastructure for this development going to come from? You're going to put 1,833 homes in an area, and I would like to ask each one of you to take a drive, please, down Buckeye Road and see what it looks like today, and then add 3,000 cars on that road. Because Fort Hamer is not coming anytime soon, and neither is JJ Road. So why are we going to put in 1,833 homes in an area that's agriculture? Their environmental narrative shows the water drainage moving to the north into Little Manatee River, right through Sundance. Do you know what they used? The FEMA map from 2014. Not the one that just came out, not the one that came out in 2019, but 2014. The houses in Sundance already are taking the drainage from the fields. What's going to happen when they're paved over and the water runoff runs right through Sundance to get to Little Manatee River? Sorry, not Manatee River. Commissioners, please hear us. 1,833 additional homes. They haven't, you don't have the infrastructure yet for the houses that you've already put in Parish on Moccasen-Wallow Road. I'm asking for a denial because you don't have the infrastructure. You don't have the funding. How can you approve something that you have no money for? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Louis Barnes, and after Louis Barnes, we have Kimberly Camacho.
Yes, I'm Louis Barnes, and I'm sworn in, and thanks once again for having me. My concerns, again, you know, we moved out of the city a long time ago to get away from all the lights and the traffic and all that. And now, it seems like it's not just a little development, it's like a city. It's the way things are going. I get it. But I would like to ask that we look at how much light pollution we're going to generate, and also, once again, like everybody else already mentioned, the issues with traffic. My drive to work, I work Sarasota by the airport. My drive in the last few years has gone from 40 minutes one way to an hour and 15. When this goes in, I'm sure I may be driving two hours one way to go to work. That's four hours a day on the road. So please take that all into consideration. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Again, Kimberly Camacho, and after Kimberly, we have Byron Hodgson.
Thank you for having us today. My name is Kimberly Camacho. I have been sworn.
Thank you.
I have a question. When is enough enough? We've already got all of these houses coming in that have already been approved, and we can't do anything about it. I'm asking you to vote against this today because, as they have said, environmentally, we have seen everything. In fact, approximately a month ago, I saw a Florida panther that crossed my path on Buckeye Road. We see hawks, eagles, otter, hogs, et cetera. You name it, it's out there, everything but, like you said, a black bear. The environmental impact on this is not just going to be to the animals, it's to the air quality. When you're adding that many houses, you're going to be adding almost 3,666 cars to our roadways. That produces a lot of air pollution, noise pollution, the light pollution that this is going to cause. This gentleman has come out there, and he had telescopes that he's gotten some wonderful pictures from. We won't see that anymore. My kids, I've been out there for 20 years. When my kids came out there, we used to love to look up at the stars. We won't be able to see those with our grandchildren because there's going to be too much light pollution. There's too many people. It's too much. When is enough enough? We've got to at least wait till we've got the infrastructure to handle it. Like the lady before me said, we don't have the infrastructure for the cars to even move as is. It won't take them that long to build these houses. It never does. The houses will be up before the roadways are fixed, before we have the stormwater ability to handle all the water running off, because you're now going from pervious ground to impervious. Where's it going to go? It's got to stop at some point. We need to put a hold. We've got lots of homes coming in. We've got lots of, you know, lots of people moving in. There's enough homes. So I'm asking you to vote against this for now. Maybe it's something that needs to be readdressed in the future, but we don't have the ability to deal with it right at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Last speaker card I have is Byron Hodgson. And ma'am, if you could, just state the name, and that he has been sworn.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is Byron Hodgson, and he has been sworn.
Thank you.
I'm a neighboring landowner that's being encroached upon. The map you showed on the screen shows that the Pritchard Road is owned by the development. And that way, it locks me out from my 100 acres of land behind it. That's my entryway, and it's now a dedicated road. The other problem I am, I've had 25 years of taxes on a messed-up deed that was concocted with non-recorded measurements, and they have come at me several times to steal my ditches that were dug in 1962 for my property, and they want to get the drainage from using my ditches. And... And they, I pay the taxes, I got the tax report this year, and they, they, I, I, I don't, there's, they made mistakes in the drawing, and they get made two triangles, and then so they've gerrymandered them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody who didn't provide a speaker card who wishes to come and speak on this application? You have to come up and, again, just state your name and that you have been sworn. Seems like I've said that before.
Phil Moss, can you hear me?
Yes.
Phil Moss, I'm with the Sundance community, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
I just, you know, just to recap, and I promise I'll end before twelve-thirty. The, you know, I think we are at a breaking point. You know, what has, what is in flight in that area of the county? We don't really know the impact of it. That Buckeye Road specifically, just a few months ago, we had the Piney Point incident. Buckeye Road is, that's where Piney Point is. So you're talking about putting eighteen hundred homes on a road that is one lane, there's no emergency lanes, and when you, if you drive off that road, you, it is going to be, you're going to be in a ditch that is twenty feet deep in a lot of areas. So I just would, given the impact of where, I don't know what's happening, you know, with Piney Point, if there is another event, and you have that many homes in that area, evacuation routes in and out of there, I think it's too much too soon, and I would hope that the Manatee County Commissioners would reconsider, or consider denying this for now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Again, is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? Anyone at all? Okay. We're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing. I made a comment about approaching twelve-thirty. What's the pleasure of the commission? Do you want to power through? Staff is mainly a clerk. Are we?
I have two questions, sir.
Okay. All right. All right, let's just go ahead and try to, try to work through this. So we've had a lot of comments. I have a couple of questions. Mr. Neal, or maybe somebody from the Neal team, if you could, can you please give some additional information related to the Fort Hammer Road? As I recall, I think you've been involved in construction of a portion of that already, and is there, are there segments of the road that are currently approved and likely to be constructed separate and apart from the segments within this community that would provide access?
Pat Neal, Mr. Chairman, the answers are yes, yes, and yes. You may recall that on May fourth, two thousand eight, the tanker truck blew up over the Manatee River. Carlos Baruf and I came up with a thirty million dollar plan, a tolling plan to build and subsume the county's responsibilities for their ninety-two million dollar bridge. We then created the Economic Stimulus Working Group, found a way to mitigate the sawtooth swordfish, found a way to finance it, changed the price of the bridge to about thirty million, to about thirty million dollars, including the change orders, and finished that bridge. It was awarded, we actually bid fifth. Once it was set up, we saw that somebody who was really a bridge builder could build it, and they, Johnson Construction Company did build it. You know that in your comprehensive plan and in your advanced plans, both the north and south approaches to Fort Hammer Bridge, what's called Manatee, Upper Manatee River Road on the south, are in your plan for the next forty-eight months for completion. They should be awarded within the next eighteen months. North of that, we'll complete within a year, the Fort Hammer Extension to Moxon Walla Road. This will be with public funds. We've worked with Mrs. De Augustino and others for fourteen pieces of right-of-way. It took us five and a half years to get it underway, but the picture that John shows you is a real picture of a four-lane highway headed north. We'll then build through our own property, the remaining, to our new middle school at Road FF, and north of us, Lennar will build through their property to Buckeye. Then, as part of the Jones Farm, property before you today, we contemplate a public infrastructure district which will build to the Hillsborough County line. And our primary work right now is with the Suburban Land Reserve, which is a company owned by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, to build through their property through Hillsborough County to US forty-one. They own all the right-of-way. Of course, they're willing to make the right-of-way available for public transportation and a public infrastructure district. So we believe this road will be built to the south for twenty-six miles and to the north for five and a half miles.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's one of the points I wanted to understand, is that along with this comes a roadway network. It's not just utilizing Buckeye to, to access the roadway network.
I might say that Moxon Walla Road is also going to be awarded within the next, as soon as the right-of-way from Mr. Chin is acquired, and the Lennar Company has agreed to invest four-point-two million dollars on Buckeye. So we think that the urban infrastructure will be there. We've worked on or contributed to four school sites, and Junior College landed there, so we think it's going to be a complete urban environment in due course.
And Mr. Neal, before you step away, could you please address the issue, or the status or your understanding of Pritchett Road? Is that a public right-of-way? And is it, is it the intent of the project to improve it?
I'm glad I met Mr. Barnes and Mr. Hodgson. I'm going to go see Mr. Hodgson. We think he has every right of use and access. We don't contemplate that he'll have any struggles. I intend to talk with Caleb Grimes and Mr. Hodgson right after this meeting to see if we can assuage his concerns. We see no concerns there. As to Mr. Barnes, we don't think we'll interrupt the current gravel road. We have, we'll use, in lighting cases, if there's lighting near him, it'll be star-saving lighting, but we have no desire to light his street or have any interaction with his street. It'll be separated by a buffer and most likely a hedge, perhaps also a brim. So we don't think we'll interfere either with their uses on this project.
And do you have a information that would allow you to maybe explain how close the closest unit in the proposed community would be to the existing community just over the county line?
Our property is separated from Sundance by a three-hundred-and-twenty-foot TECO easement, so under no circumstances will any house be closer than three-hundred-and-twenty feet. I might say, Mr. Chairman, for the correct facts, I know that our houses will be farther away than that, but I don't know the particular numbers.
Okay, all right. Any additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Rutledge?
No, 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 I'm clear.
Okay, very good. All right. So, anything for staff? I mean, we've gone through the application, gone through public comments. I had to ask the questions I have, so is there anything further?
I, I had one question for staff.
Yes, sir.
I, first of all, I, I really value the commitment by private enterprise to bring roadways and access to our community, because I live off the east side of seventy-five, and access when seventy-five is blocked is, is treacherous. So I think there's a huge value there for us as a community, not just that people directly buy this property. But the other thing I wanted to know more specifically is, Mr. Neal, if you could talk a little bit about how you see the integration of the commercial component and the multimodal kind of approach, or the non-car traffic within the community? Because you take six hundred people off the general highways because they can get groceries or gas, or, you know, conveniences, fast foods, or some kind of sit-down restaurants. Can you talk a little bit about how you see that for this community? Because I do think that's a huge value if it's in fact schemed up.
John Neal, for the record. Mr. Rutledge, I, I appreciate the opportunity to address this. We sort, we see the addition of commercial as reducing trips off, off the road. Everybody needs to get their dry cleaning, they need to get groceries, they need to get things nearby their house. So these are neighborhood, neighborhood uses, and commercial's different than it used to be. We have Amazon now, so everybody shops while they're at work, and then when they get home, they have a box waiting on them. So they don't need kitchen stores and places to buy Nikes and such. So we think that entertainment is the bigger focus. It's part of the reason for our special request for restaurants and a brewery-type, modern brewery-type restaurant. We like the multimodal. It's something that you can see today in the planning stages at North River Ranch just to the south. We think that it's a better adventure to go out with your honey on an electric bike or a, or just walk to go get a meal. It's part of the new urbanism that you're seeing in communities all over the state, and we've done some research in all of those. So I got a call from a homeowner the other day who, who indicated that he was happy that we had bike lanes, because he has a bike lane, and as Mr. Galliano stated, you know, the problem with our bike lanes in other parts of the counties is they don't go anywhere. So it's better to have a path, or a sidewalk, or a bike lane that takes you somewhere where you need to go, it makes them more useful. And that's part of our mission to bring that to this area of the county. That's a larger focus, and we do think we can get people out of their vehicles and onto these multi-use paths to, to do the things which they need to do. Actually, in North River Ranch, maybe at the next meeting I'll ride one of the bikes down, we have a bike share program. So if you're a resident in this community, you get a little app, and you can check out a bike, and you can take it anywhere you want, bring it back, park it in somewhere different, and, and it's been highly used, we have good records. Does that address your comments?
Yeah, and I think that's one of the things I, I agree with the idea that we're not urban enough for some of this stuff, but I don't live in what I consider an urban part of the county, and I got bikes and runners and walkers, and there's people all over the, they want to be outside. And I think with good design, and I would argue you often do good design, is that it's the right solution for what's going forward. So, yeah, no, listen, that's helpful. I think, I think that's where we want to be going as a, in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I forgot to follow up on the cul-de-sac, the special exception related to the cul-de-sac. So is there somebody from staff that can maybe provide some clarification? And then I'll ask the applicant related to that also, so. I think, I think Mr. Gerstenberger's, I think he, I think he's laid down on the floor to hide. Oh, there, there he is. You can't hide, Tom.
Thank you. First off, for the afternoon record, Thomas Gerstenberger, Stormwater Engineering Division Manager, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
With respect to, Mr. Chair, with, with respect to your question regarding the specific approval for cul-de-sac length, let me start off first with what our county requirements for cul-de-sacs. Within the LDC, county requirements for cul-de-sac length is a maximum of eight hundred feet. With this particular application, there was some staffing reorganization that was done through Public Works. So what initially the applicant reached out to me to discuss as far as extending cul-de-sac lengths greater than hundred, eight hundred feet was transferred over to our new Development Review Division, and then subsequently that analysis, the final analysis and what you see as far as that analysis that's included in the staff report was finalized by the Development Review staff. That being said, what my understanding is, as far as the concern that was raised up in the staff report is essentially where these cul-de-sacs that would be over a hundred feet would be located within the overall development. With this being a general development plan, there is no associated street layout, there is no engineering intent that identifies a network of streets located within the overall development. That being said, and typical reasons why cul-de-sacs typically extend beyond eight hundred feet is for environmental concerns due to well and traditional wetlands or drainage features that would prevent the local street network from being interconnected, from being connected or looped internally within the street network system. So that all being said, the staff that had written up that particular portion of the specific approval findings, they are not present today, but certainly, I will coordinate further with that staff and with the applicant regarding the concerns that have been brought up in the staff report, and we will discuss this further at the BCC land use hearing.
Okay. And, you know, as an engineer, I've dealt with a lot of different municipalities, and I oftentimes experience multiple criteria where, like for this, for example, the dead-end cul-de-sac, in Manatee it's eight hundred, in Sarasota it's, I think, twelve hundred, Hillsborough might be fifteen hundred, NFPA has criteria. I think these are almost arbitrary. I think, I think you and I probably know the origin of this. I think it was two hose links was the...
Right, to string out two links to run the fire.
Which, it's not really arbitrary, there's a reason behind it, but there's also hydrants and sufficient hydrants throughout a community that doesn't require more than two hose links typically.
Well, and Mr. Chair, if I might add, and I'll go ahead and throw this exhibit on, the exhibit that's included in the staff report as well. The exhibit that's included in the staff report and also included in general development plan, you'll note that it, that the specific approval request language identified and referenced one thousand three hundred and twenty feet, which equates to, or is equivalent to, a quarter of a mile, which based upon discussion with public safety staff, our public, our public safety department staff, the, involved in, or, or paramedics, excuse me, I'm trying to say, that is their standard requirements as far as reaction time for a section of roadway that is severed or blocked. As far as the reaction time essentially on foot, should there be a blockage, or should that street be blocked, what is the reaction time to, to address a call at the end of that street on a quarter-mile distance? So that, that's why, as far as the philosophy for, within, contained within the specific approval for the quarter-mile length, and then with that quarter-mile length is a provision for a mid-block turnaround, which is identified with this eyebrow on this particular exhibit.
Okay. All right. And again, I, I think you, you made inferences to it, but it's not uncommon to get, to seek relief related to the cul-de-sac, but the staff is, the staff's concern is that there's no context
Correct.
...associated with this request.
Yes.
I, I think there would be an issue if Mr. Neal presented a plan that had every roadway as a thirteen-twenty cul-de-sac, and I'm sure that's not the case. I'm sure they can provide some additional information that helps staff better understand the, the context for this question, or this request, so, okay.
Certainly.
All right, thank you.
And if you don't mind, while I'm up, Mr. Chair, do you mind if I touch on the subject of stormwater, stormwater while I'm here?
Sure, one of my favorite subjects.
Oh, yes, mine as well.
Could you not?
Uh, yeah. I hear you in the background there, Paul. All right. All right, first off, you all right, Pat? Sorry. First off, this particular, this is a sheet that comes straight out of the general development plan. It's a drainage exhibit that we typically look for, for a large project, application of this sort, to, to identify the existing and historic drainage patterns with respect to the site and the surrounding areas. First off, let me start off with, for this overall development, the overall development in its entirety is located within the Little Manatee River watershed. And as we all know, staff, applicant, the residents, public, in this, in this hearing as well know, Little Manatee River is, Little Manatee River watershed collects and drains water from both counties, from Manatee County and from Hillsborough County. The headwaters of the Little Manatee River are essentially out in vicinity of Duette, and also leading further north into Hillsborough County beyond Ruskin and Sun City Center. With respect to this particular watershed, the Little Manatee River watershed, Manatee County staff's best source of information for Little Manatee County, for the Little Manatee River watershed is Hillsborough County. Because Hillsborough County has completed a watershed management plan for Little Manatee River, the watershed management plan includes drainage runoff that flows northward, in this particular case for this project, northwards into Hillsborough County. this particular case for this project, northwards into Hillsborough County. As part of staff's review of this project, we requested that the applicant and the engineer of record for this project reach out to Hillsborough County to, not only to obtain information on the Little Manti River watershed management plan, but also to collect and identify the stormwater requirements and regulations that are associated with development in Hillsborough County. So, what, and I'll bring this word. So, what you see included in the staff report as, and contained within, in the stormwater engineering conditions, are essentially congregating, well, not congregating, excuse me, are essentially combining regulations, stormwater regulations, from both Manti County and Hillsborough County. So, as far as attenuation requirements, as far as floodplain requirements, what you'll see as far as, and it's more specific to the first stormwater condition, number one, is facets of Hillsborough and Manti County design requirements in this staff report as a stormwater condition. So, as far as any type of stormwater design criteria, as far as storm events, as far as the rainfall, and I'm not getting very technical at this point, but essentially, what we are used to and accustomed to in Manti County, this applicant has taken a step forward, and it also accounted for design requirements that would be associated with development in Hillsborough County. So, as would be typical for Manti County, we would look for attenuation for this particular project to design, to account for stormwater runoff for a 25-year storm event, with respect to the attenuation of runoff in a post-development condition, and also to address floodplain mitigation for impacts within, both the FEMA-identified 100-year floodplain delineation, but also the Little Manti River watershed management plan identified 100-year floodplain delineation as well, to, that any impacts within those 100-year floodplain delineations be accounted for and addressed as part of the stormwater design for this project.
Very good. And for the record, Mr. Heep departed at 12:49. Very good. Mr. Gersonberger, will county staff, Manatee County staff coordinate with Hillsborough County staff regarding the results of this model?
Certainly.
So, they'll provide them the information?
Certainly.
Okay.
Certainly.
And I notice in the condition or stipulation that there's a statement that the modeling shall demonstrate no adverse impacts. I think typically, we also associate that requirement, being a requirement of the Water Management District.
Right.
So, we've discussed Hillsborough County, we've discussed Manatee County's review, but in addition to that, the same information's going to be reviewed by the Water Management District. Is that correct?
Correct, Mr. Chair, in conjunction with environmental resource permit for this development.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, very good. And I think it's also worth noting that this is above and beyond what is typically provided in Manatee County with regard to analysis, the storm frequency and duration, oh, duration of 24 hours, but the frequency.
Yes, it does incorporate both facets of Manti County and Hillsborough County, as far as the listing of the different stormy events and rainfall distribution, rainfall accumulation associated with each of those storm events. Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any questions for staff? All right, very good. Mr. Neal, can you please provide some clarity or additional information related to cul-de-sac length and the basis of the special exception?
I will, Mr. Chair, and we may not have communicated effectively, and we will... The reason we typically at Neal ask for cul-de-sacs is to preserve wetlands. Traditionally at Neal, we do not destroy wetlands for residential development. In this case, we do not expect to. We believe that there's six places, which I'll mark now, that we think will require cul-de-sacs, but I will ask Rachel and Jeb to create a study, and we will work with staff prior to the time we get to the board to make sure it's resolved. I'll show you the six. The problem with wetlands is they're natural systems that we can't move, and so if we can't get a street back, then we just have to build a cul-de-sac. I think we'll make an adequate demonstration, and I think your team will understand it.
Very good. Thank you. And that's very helpful. I think when there's a request or a special exception, or special approval, I'm sorry, the context is very helpful, and if it's to avoid impacting wetlands, I think that helps understand the reasoning behind it. So, thank you.
Would you like me to do a little rebuttal, or shall I stand down and tell you?
First, let's ask staff if there's any additional closing comments or information.
Marshall Robinson, Development Services, we have nothing further.
Very good, thank you. All right. Mr. Neal, or Mr. Grimes, closing comments slash rebuttal?
For the correct information, I'd like you to rely on Caleb. I'd like to talk a little bit about neighbors before we do so. We always traditionally do a good job with our neighbors, and we recognize our managing neighbors, and we'll do a good job with Mr. Hodgkins and Mr. Barnes. In truth, we've missed this little Manatee South group because they are separated by the 320-foot easement. I'll give you my commitment that I'll try to talk to Mr. Greenley and see if we can resolve the Hillsborough County concerns. Caleb will go much more technically through the presentation. I will say that we love working with Mr. Robinson. The fact that he was a Hillsborough County planner is terrific. We count on Marshall, and we know that his analysis is good. He's been a great hire for your department, and we like working with him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Caleb Grimes. Just a few points that I want to address, just for the record, so that we understand them. There were questions raised about lighting, and, you know, that used to be an issue, but our county has a very strict light code to prevent light pollution, and light pollution in the sky. We're required, we no longer have the ones that shine up in the air, they have to shine down. They are not allowed to leave the perimeter of the development. So, this project has not asked for any change in that, and so it will have to follow the code to prevent the lighting from escaping. On the road system, I want to make sure that you understand, and you probably saw it, but with Fort Hamer Road, that is going to be a very important road, Fort Hamer Extension, Mr. Neal, as he indicated, is building it up through his project, North River Ranches, up to the northern boundary of, or the northernmost access that he will use. And there is actually an LDA in place with Lennar that when they do their first phase, that they will build the remainder of that roadway all the way from his northern entrance all the way to Fort Hamer Road, uh, excuse me, Buckeye Road. That is in place, it is an agreement that has been put in place, and they already have their first phase approval, so that will be going forward very soon. In that same LDA, as Mr. Neal indicated, they will be rebuilding Buckeye Road from Fort Hamer over to 301, and I think it's interesting that that will have a mobility trail associated with it, and not just a sidewalk, but for all of the reasons that John Neal explained about people walking and riding and so forth. And they, of course, have some commercial in their site to capture those as well. And I did want to make sure there was a statement made about the water runoff with the roads, with the homes. The stormwater system that Mr. Gersonberger discussed and others must be built upfront with your development, with your plat, with your infrastructure improvements, so that the stormwater system that is going to do all of the things Mr. Gersonberger talked about is done before your homes go in. Finally, for Mr. Hodgins, Mr. Jones wanted to make it very, very clear that he does not claim any ownership of Pritchard Road. I will say that on some of the maps, there's such of a scale that you can't see that. You see Pritchard Road, and you see the property line, but if you look at the detailed maps, Mr. Jones does not claim any ownership over Pritchard Road. It will not be changed, it will not adversely affect Mr. Hodgins' ability to get to his property. So, just wanted to make that very, very clear, that there is nothing being done with that or in any way to stop access back there. And finally, I just wanted to emphasize that the TECO easement, that is the 320-foot easement between there, if you look at it on the maps and the aerials, it's a very wooded piece of land in there that will separate these developments. So, you have that 320, plus the buffers that this project will have, plus the setbacks of the homes, from even the property lines to the north in Sundance. So, that's the points I wanted to make. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them, but otherwise, we look forward to your positive recommendation.
Very good, thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, deliberation, thoughts on the application.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend adoption of Manti County zoning ordinance number PD MU 2032 ZG, and approval of the general development plan with stipulations A1 through A16, B1 through B7, C1 through C4, and D1. Adoption of finding for specific approval, and granting specific approval for an alternative to the land development code as presented by staff.
Very good, and that's the recommended, the recommended motion?
Yes, sir.
That allows for the cul-de-sac?
Yes, sir.
Variation, okay, very good, thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
So, Mr. Judge, just for the record, so that would be the first recommend motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Very good. We have a motion, and Mr. Rutledge, I heard you second it.
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. Any discussion or deliberation? All right, I think we've said a lot about this application. So, with that, the chair's going to call us to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0 with Mr. Heep and Mr. Roth being absent. Thank you. So, with that, I believe that concludes our agenda today, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
All right, welcome to the Brayton City Council Meeting, 8:30 a.m., Wednesday, September 8th, 2021. I'm Mayor Gene Brown. Welcome to the City Hall chambers. At this time, we'll ask Pastor Robert Bledsoe to come forward from Trinity United Methodist Church to say our invocation. Please stand.
Let's join together in prayer. Gracious and loving God, we first and foremost give you thanks. Give you thanks for this new day, for this chance to be together and to talk about matters that are important to each and every person in this room and in our wonderful city. God, we pray that our words would be meaningful, and well-thought-out, and respectful, that we would treat one another with love and all of our...